Right ahead, we're on record.
Okay. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at Sec. of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Would you please call a roll, Nora?
Councilman D. Piero.
Here.
Mr. Frigieri.
Here.
Mr. Mendel.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have with us tonight our board planner, Ms. Favate, our board engineer, Mr. Canjiano, and our board attorney, Mr. Wendell.
All right, if we'd rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any members of the public or of this meeting who have an item to come before us that has not, is not on tonight's agenda? I do not see any such thing. All right, we have a resolution. Application number 21:501 Wildlife Preserves. Is there somebody here to make the motion to?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the resolution for Wildlife Preserves Troy Meadow Road, application number 21:501, block 765, lot 81.10, preliminary and final major site plan with C variances.
Mr. Mendel, second. All right, Nora, if you call a roll, please.
Um, Frigieri?
Yes.
Mendel?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Napolitano? Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes. All right. We're through with that. Is there any other items that aren't showing on the agenda, Nora?
No other items.
All right. Uh, the first item on our docket is District at 1515 Urban Renewal LLC, 1515 Route 10, Block 200. This is a continuation of previous hearings. Counsel?
Yes, good evening. For the record, Tom Almond, Dave Pitten, here in Parsippany. Nice to see you all in person for a change. And we're just, our hearing regarding the 1515 application on Route 10. Recall, we were here, we were at a Zoom meeting about a month ago. We are testing away from our landscape architect, our traffic engineer, our planner. We basically concluded our case, but there were a loose end that the board wanted us to follow up on. And that was a traffic issue regarding recent developments in Parsippany that may affect our traffic report. So in response to that, we filed a revised traffic report by Mr. Alan Lothian. He's here tonight. And my plan is to have him testify about that revised report updated with the recent data that he obtained, and then basically do a summation or answer questions the board may have as our case is essentially concluded. So unless you have questions in the mail, I'll call Mr. Lothian, and we'll present that as additional testimony.
Thank you, Nora.
Is he on, Nora?
Yes, everyone's on.
We call Mr. Lothian was sworn last time during the Zoom meeting.
So Lothian, uh, do you swear a firm and tell the truth for this planning board at tonight's meeting?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Lothian, just for the record, please state and spell your name.
Alan Lothian, A-L-A-N-L-O-T-H-I-A-N.
And just for the record, Mr. Lothian was qualified as an expert, as a traffic engineer last time, and unless there's been any change, I believe he continues to qualify as a, as an expert, correct, Mr. Lothian?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Uh, Chair, the witness has been sworn, and he is identified as an expert.
Thank you, Ms. Wendell. Mr. Lothian, on our Zoom call about a month ago, you offered testimony about your traffic report, and you were asked questions about whether that report included recent developments in Parsippany, other affordable housing developments. And your answer was that it did not. But if you sent revised reports to include data from those projects?
Yeah, so based on the feedback at the last hearing, we provided a supplement that looked at, uh, the analysis, the traffic study with a focus on the critical intersection of Littleton and Campus, uh, during the commuter peak hours, the AM and the PM peak hours, the 7:00 to 9:00 AM, 4:00 to 6:00 PM.
Why don't you just tell us, summarize the findings in that report? That's on file with the board, is that correct?
It is.
Thank you.
So what we did, uh, we used pre-COVID counts from 2019 for those commuter peak hours. Uh, we included traffic from five recent developments that was provided by the township. Uh, they are, let me just, Two Campus Drive, Three Campus Drive, The Octagon, 1500 Littleton Road, and 169 Johnson Road. It was, it was a mixture of residential and commercial projects. We projected those onto the roadway network based on their individual studies that were provided by the township. Uh, and we analyzed the build condition based on the current full build and Phase 1 development programs, which, uh, which are less than what was in the, uh, the conservative traffic impact study, which was in front of the board previously. Uh, so we were looking at the 498 apartments, 60,000 square foot retail, and 120-room hotel for the full build-out, uh, compared to 685 apartments, 132,500 square feet of retail, and 100-room hotel, which was part of the NJDOT-approved traffic impact study. Uh, and for the Phase 1, just as another supplemental analysis in the, in the report, we looked at, uh, 262 apartments in the Phase 1, uh, development program. And what the analysis showed is that there was, uh, no significant impact on the level of service during those commuter peak hours. As a result of our project, we had, as, as I testified loosely at the last hearing, we, we had approximately 27 additional trips from our development going through that, going, westbound through the campus and Littleton intersection, uh, which equates to one new trip every two minutes on average, a little, a little, uh, a little less than that. Uh, and it was, you know, the results were consistent with the more conservative traffic impact study that was previously submitted and approved by DOT.
So in essence, the conclusion that you had given last time regarding the potential impact from this project on this intersection, which is across Route 10, regular side of Route 10. Your testimony, then, you didn't believe would be significant. You've now confirmed that in terms of the numbers you looked at?
Yes, based on what was discussed at the last hearing.
That's all I have is chose.
So Mr. Lothian coordinated with our office, or the board engineer's office, and, um, we reviewed his, his submission, and we basically, from methodology, we concur with his approach, his methodology, um, is consistent with current standards, it's consistent with good engineering and good traffic engineering practices. We had a few, uh, comments still from our original reports for information on the queuing at a couple of the, particularly at the intersection of, uh, Route 10 and Route 202. He subsequently, not in this report, but subsequently provided us, um, an email with that information, and when he submits his full, um, when the applicant submits their full report, that information would be in there. Um, we were happy that there is no, uh, increase in queue, um, at those existing ramps going around the jug handles at, uh, by the Wendy's and by, uh, the gas station there on the, on the, on the southerly side of, uh, Route 10 and Route 202. So, um, and the information provided at Gate Hall 202 and Campus, we went through it, we concur with the information provided, the information is correct. Um, and as he mentioned, the, the result, um, for the increase, Mr. Lothian, is how many new trips at the result of a build? Why don't you develop that a little bit more? You had a lot of information in the report, you might as well, uh, just present it a little bit, um, more. You had mentioned there's a no-build condition that we represented, the, um, all the approved but not yet built properties, we gave you those, and also the condition of the existing. Why don't you go through the no-build condition for, and how did you get to the year 2023 as well?
Uh, the year 2023, that, that's what we had projected in, in, uh, other analysis. I think 2023, 2024 is the ultimate build year for, uh, Phase 1. Uh, so we were just looking at, you know, based on the 2019, we were looking at four years out, uh, for background growth. Um, and then we were looking at, again, as you stated, the five additional developments on top of there. The no-build included, uh, the reoccupied office space, and then the build condition included the re, uh, the additional trips that I testified to, the 27 additional trips through that, uh, movement from our, our development, and, uh, additional trips that are potentially rerouted from the, uh, neighboring properties next door to us, uh, which are the Octagon and the Delta building. So it included all of them.
Again, um, I think the, how many trips was, was a net increase from?
Net increase with ours and the other developments was 33, or 60 total, so one every minute on average.
Okay.
And ours was 27, our portion of that.
Okay, so all of them together were 60?
Sixty.
The whole, uh, built condition of all the properties being built, um, would be a, a net change of 60 PM peak trips?
PM peak trips. In, in the morning, it is 21.
Now, it should be noted that at that increase of 60, you, you should mention that there's a reduction at many other movements and intersections with the final build-out.
Primarily at the intersection of, uh, Route 10 and 202, and the ramps, subsequent ramps around that area.
So those intersections have?
Those have a reduction in traffic.
I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
When do they have this reduction?
During the commuter peak hours. Uh, so we looked at it during the AM peak hour and the weekday evening peak hour.
Is that upon completion of Phase 1 or Phase 3?
The ultimate build-out is with the, is the, the full build is the, the whole complete development.
Okay. So at that point, the queue times at 202 and 10 will be reduced?
They will not be significantly increased.
Okay.
Certain movements will be reduced.
Very good point. Why don't you mention what the level of services are and the queue times are with, with the project without it, with these projects without it? I think it's, um, valuable for the board since that's why we're here.
Okay. So at the intersection, uh, at the intersection of 202 and Campus, we're looking at between the no-build and the build condition, uh, level service C during the AM peak hour, and it maintains a level of service C for the overall intersection, and during the PM, it would be a level of service D overall, with, again, the build condition as a level of service D as well.
Okay, now being a tropical engineer, what is level C and level D?
So A is best, F is the worst.
Okay.
Uh, so, so it's right in the middle.
Okay.
And, and the queuing does not extend beyond the, uh, the available queuing.
A is no cars on the road, it's Sunday morning, you know? Weather's terrible.
It's what we all imagine.
Right. Completely clear highway.
And F is stop and go.
Right.
Okay. Are there other members of the board have questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? No? Professionals, if you have any more thoughts for this? Are there, I'm going to open this up to questions by the public now of this witness at this time. Are there members of the public who have wished, have questions of this witness on his testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none? Counselor?
We have nothing further to offer. We have other folks here now, if there are questions from the board about our, our project, but we've obviously given you testimony over, I guess this is the fourth meeting or third meeting, I've forgotten. We've covered all the bases, we've agreed to all the comments in your consultant reports to address all those. So basically, unless there are questions of us, um, we conclude our case.
Do any members of the board have any questions of the counselor, of his, uh, his witnesses at this time, before we open it to the public? Okay. Hearing and seeing none. At this time, are there any members of the public that wish to come forth and speak on this particular application at this time? Hearing and seeing none. I close the public portion of this, uh, proceeding, oh? Nope, nope. Closed, public. Portion of this proceeding at this time? Counselor, you want to sum, close up?
Yeah, I would like to brief, I have another case on tonight, I appreciate the board's time, we've been at this for quite a while, and I say wait, just in this application for several months. But this matter goes back many, many years, as you probably know. It goes back to the area being found to be need of redevelopment, you have two, basically, obsolete office blocks on the site that are vacant. Here, need of redevelopment, a redevelopment plan, a redevelopment agreement, and annexation with Hanover, which I would suggest a bit of time to perfect. All that's happened over these past, I guess it's been five or so years. So we're kind of at the finish line of this project in terms of getting the requisite approval from Parsippany, which we still have to go to Hanover for the, for the second part. But I think the important takeaway here is that a lot of work has gone into this, a lot of study's gone into it. Uh, the application, you've heard testimony about complacency with the redevelopment plan, except for some very minor matters that I'll talk about in a second, but basically in terms of the mix of uses, the heights of the buildings, the building setbacks, the building density, all of that, the traffic improvements, all complied with the building plan 100%. The variances that we've asked for are very minor, we have some signage variances, we talked about, our planner testified to those last time. We also have some electrical, uh, equipment in the front yard setback, our Route 10, again, properly screened, but need a variance for those. Uh, we've heard no comments in opposition to those requested variances, they're relatively minor in the scheme of things, we think that we've given you the requisite proofs to grant those variances. And basically, we hope that the board will see fit to take action tonight to kind of give us our, our approvals, so we can continue this project and move it forward. It's going to be a terrific project, very exciting. Recall the architectural features in this project, uh, that were designed as part of the redevelopment plan, it's all a very exciting project. It will also be a part of your overall housing obligation in town. So it's a significant project, we're anxious to get forward, to move forward, hopefully you'll vote to, to vote to that tonight. Thank you.
All right. That closes the part, the public portion of the, uh, application at this point. Are there members of the board who wish to discuss this at this time? Any comments from the board before we? Yes, Mr. Mealy?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, are you familiar with the Parsippany Focus Internet newspaper, sir?
I am not.
There was a letter in there today that questioned why your application would have nothing to do with funding or subsidizing the Fire District 6. Could you clarify what your stance is on that?
I'm not sure that I, I didn't handle the pilot application as part of this, my client is here, perhaps you can address it, but that was negotiated as part of the financing package with the township committee.
Right.
It's not a planning board issue.
Okay.
And there's, the pilot has paid a little taxes, obviously, I'm not sure exactly what the parameters are vis a vis the fire department, how they're going to get funding or not, but money will certainly go to the township, and they can do with that as they please, obviously.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there other members? Mr. Mendel?
Number one, the project is beautiful. And, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing it completed. I still have my own reservations about the lack of completion of the interconnect until Phase 1, and also the lack of a playground for the younger children. However, I still will be voting for this, and I just want that noted, that I would like to see especially the playground, if at all possible, put into that project.
Couple of comments. First, on the, on the traffic improvement, just so we're clear, do you agree with the way it's drafted today? Basically, once we get the permits, we have to build the improvements. That may happen next week or in three months, we don't know, but it gives us the right to go and do Phase 1 if we don't have those permits.
Okay.
But they may happen during Phase 1 or as Phase 1, they may be continued simultaneously, don't know, but that's what the agreement calls for, we'll abide by that. In terms of the top lot, I mean, the client just doesn't think it's required or necessary, there are a number of impeding spaces in the project that could be used by people of all ages, including children, but I guess they'll take it under advisement, and we'll see how things go. If they conclude over time that it's something that makes some sense, obviously, then they'll be able to do that.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Other members of the board have comments on this? Mr. Counselor?
I think, uh, Mr. Boshman and I go back about six years on this project, uh, from day one. The viability of this project, not that they have to tear down two buildings and, and build an access road and a roundabout, uh, from Dryden Way, was rather costly, and, uh, our, uh, business administrator at the time was Ellen Salmon, and she did a lot of negotiating on that. And we needed, we needed that access road from Dryden Way, it took a lot of traffic off of 10 and 202. There, there were two drivers for some of us on the council and, and for our business administrator. Uh, one was we were being driven by the courts for affordable housing obligation, and this was solving a piece of that. And the other was we would be able to, by making the developer, uh, provide this access to a, a road behind his development, and also goes behind, uh, Delta Dental and the Octagon Building, uh, terminates on, I believe, Jefferson Road. That would take traffic off of 202 and 10. So we're actually helping traffic at an intersection which is overburdened all the time right now. That was a good thing. So those were the drivers for us. The pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes is not a method I would support in general going forward. It was a winner for us with UPS, uh, because they had no apartments, no schoolchildren, and they moved, uh, 400 high-tech people into, off of Cherry Hill Road, and that was a winner for the town and for UPS. This one with, with, with schoolchildren, with the apartments, not, not such a good idea for a pilot, but we were into this, and this was a way to get the buildings down, two rotting buildings that were producing no revenue for the township, uh, to make a revenue producer out of it, and, and to provide some extra benefits. So I'm happy we're getting to the point now where we can hopefully conclude this and, and start to see the improvements we've been waiting six years for.
All right. Any other comments from members of the board? Do I hear a motion to approve the application? So moved. Second, Frigieri? All right, uh...
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Mendel. Frigieri, second. If you would call a roll, please.
D. Piero?
Yes.
Frigieri?
Yes.
Mendel?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And that, uh, Mr. Almond, you would agree that that motion to approve was with the conditions that were identified during the hearing, during the testimony that your client agreed to, correct?
Absolutely, and that was something about a site plan as well as a sound moving permit as part of the application.
I knew you would agree with me.
Yes. Thank you very much, and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Almond.
Again, good to see you all in person.
My experience is not always...
Not always.
So, moving right along. The next item we have on our agenda is Application 19:513 UPS 801 and 799 Jefferson Road, Block 741, lots 1.1 and 1.2, preliminary and final major site plan with C variances. Yes, just, just for the record, Mr. DeDeech is, uh, arriving as we speak.
I guess he did, you want to pull his nameplate?
Does anybody have Mr. DeDeech's nameplate down there?
Yeah, we can pass it down.
That's not, that would give them a convenience, but they're...
Plenty of room down here.
In my 30-plus years of being in land use boards here in Parsippany, we actually usually the secretary or the, would often switch people around just to change the chemistry. No, Nora doesn't do that, but the previous, previous occupants all would do that regularly, I think just for their own entertainment.
Don't give her any ideas.
Counselor?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Luke Pontier of the law firm, Dave Pitten, here on behalf of the applicant tonight, United Parcel Service. The property that's the subject of tonight's application, as mentioned earlier, is 799 and 801 Jefferson Road, and that is Block 741, lots 1.1 and 1.2 on the township's tax map. The property is located in the SEB 5A Specialized Economic Development District, and is approximately 42.6 acres across both of those lots. To provide a bit of background, the applicant has operated on-site since the late 1970s, and this facility has become an integral part of UPS's operations throughout New Jersey and the country, as you'll hear from a representative of UPS tonight. Uh, and to provide some additional context for this application before you, uh, this property is adjacent to a residential subdivision in Hanover Township. You will hear testimony about that, uh, and residents of that subdivision have made complaints about sounds emanating from the property, uh, including formally to Morris County. This application has been pending and was submitted back in August of 2019, uh, and since that point, the applicant has been working diligently with the neighbors and with the county, uh, to come to a resolution. As you'll hear again from the UPS representative, UPS has taken other steps to reduce the sound decibels emanating from the site, uh, but ultimately, this application, their new sound wall that's before you tonight, is a major component of their efforts to reduce the sound levels. The applicant is seeking preliminary and final site plan approval, along with variance relief, to demolish the existing 13 and 1/2-foot sound wall on the site, uh, which is currently only on Lot 1.2, uh, and then to construct an approximately 32-feet-high, 1,069-feet-long sound wall on both Lot 1.2 and on to Lot 1.1. The applicant also proposes grading in connection with the construction of the new wall. However, no changes are proposed to the existing building or to the utility infrastructure. As I mentioned, there is, uh, some variance relief that's required with this application, both being C variances, one being for the height of the wall, and that's a variance from Section 430-11A of the Township Code to permit a 32-foot-high sound wall, where a maximum height of 6 feet is permitted, uh, and there is a sound wall, as I said earlier, existing that's currently 13 and 1/2 feet. The other variance is for the setback of the wall in between the applicant's two properties, and that's a variance from Section 430-11D of the township code to permit technically no setback to the sound wall where it crosses the two lot lines between Lot 1.1 and Lot 1.2, and a minimum setback of 6 inches is required, required for fences and walls. In connection with the application, we did receive various review memorandum from, uh, both township departments and the board professionals, uh, those being from the Water Department, which is dated October 16th, 2019, the Sewer Department dated October 2nd, 2019, the Fire Department, and District 6 of the Fire Department being dated September 9th, 2019, the Parks and Forestry Department dated October 28th, 2019, uh, this board's engineer, which was dated September 16th, 2019, uh, as well as the board's planner dated August 30th of 2019. With me tonight, I do have four witnesses, those being a representative of UPS, a civil engineer, an acoustical engineer, and a professional planner. We did provide, uh, the required notices. On July 14th of this year, we mailed notice to property owners within 200 feet of the property, both in Parsippany and in the adjacent Hanover Township, and on July 15th, uh, notice was published in the Daily Record, uh, each in accordance with applicable law. Uh, and unless the board has any preliminary matters that you'd like to address...
Yes, in the, uh, planning report, we have several waivers that have to be addressed at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yep, um, we did recommend, uh, granting of several waivers, given that there are no changes to the building, uh, or the operations, uh, of, of the facility, and these include things like, um, you know, traffic, we know, changes in traffic, uh, lighting, landscaping, signage, solid waste, et cetera, those types of, uh, of elements, and then we also recommended waivers for the conditions of final, uh, major site plan, which the outland is seeking, both preliminary and final combined. So I think this board's experienced granting those particular waivers. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, do we need a motion to, uh, that's, uh, can I hear a motion to approve the waivers mentioned in the planner's report? So moved. And a second?
Second.
Second, Mealy.
Okay. Can we do it by voice vote, or should we?
That's a more doable, just make sure she's...
Okay.
Did somebody beat me to it?
You could do a roll call, please.
I just wanted to double-check on who made that second. I heard two.
Was it you, Nick?
Yeah.
I got it in first.
DeDeeche?
Yes.
DiPiero?
Yes.
For Jerry?
Yes.
Mendel?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
All right, now that we've got that out of the way, just one last thing that I wish to mention. It has not been a problem in the past. My daughter-in-law used to work for Dave Pitney years ago, or some time ago. She no longer does. I just want to make sure that there is no question on anybody's part that I would be influenced by that at this point. I have heard other cases by Dave Pitney since, but I felt that it was necessary to be transparent about this.
Mr. Vice Chair, you are overly transparent, and there is absolutely no conflict, as far as I'm concerned, under the law, for these type of hearings in this type of context.
This is the first one where there might be objectors.
Well, but there's no conflict.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, the applicant has no objection as well. I can confirm that Mr. Dinsmore no longer works for Dave Pitney.
No.
Okay.
All right, and with that, I will call the applicant's first witness, Paul Ben Dixon. Mr. Ben Dixon, if you could please provide the board with your name and the address of your company.
We'll get a sworn in first. Sir, do you swear a far until the truth before the planning board tonight?
Yes.
Okay, and that was easy. Now, please state and spell your name for the record.
Paul Ben Dixon. P-A-U-L-B-E-N-D-I-X-E-N.
Okay. And this is not an expert, right? This is a representative?
Correct. This is a veteran.
Mr. Ponteir, why don't you continue with your questioning then?
Sure. And could you please describe your relationship to this application and the applicant?
So I have been, I'm a UPS employee, have been for the last 32 years. I am in the plant engineering, and now it's called Building and Systems Engineering Group. I have, am currently the Director of the Building and Systems Engineering Department here in the New York and New Jersey area. So I have been associated with this building here for a few years.
Great, and that was my follow-up. So in this role, you are overseeing the building and the property that's the subject of tonight's application?
That's correct.
Great. And can you please give a brief description of the operations that are on-site at this UPS facility?
So UPS first received site plan approval in approximately 1975, and has been an operating site since 1979, when the facility was first constructed. And we've had a good relationship here in the community. At the time it was constructed, there were no houses developed next to us at the time. It was a vacant land, a vacant lot, and we, at that time, still constructed the 13.5-foot wall that exists today. And the facility is a crucial part to UPS's role here in the New Jersey area. In fact, it has been one of the workhorses of New Jersey and the surrounding area for decades. UPS, we process here approximately 40,000 pieces an hour out of the facility there, and over 700,000 packages a day, and we've been doing that for some time. Today, the site, and has been, it's a major player in the UPS network. It is one of our top 30, top 40, top 30 hubs in all of the country. So it is important to UPS, and packages are picked up, you know, from the businesses here in the area that ship out. They're brought into this facility, and they're sorted throughout the facility, and then they go to other hubs throughout the country, and they're also delivered, we deliver packages out of this facility to the local residents and businesses that are here in Precipiny. We'll add one more thing. Last year, UPS was classified as an essential business with the state, federal government, and having worked with the township, the town here, we were essential in many of the deliveries, and probably many of you received packages from us as well.
And I noted in my introduction that there had been some sound complaints coming from, calls from neighbors, and have you been involved throughout the discussions with the county and those adjacent neighbors?
Yes, UPS has been responsive throughout the entire process, which started actually a few years back, and we've been, we've engaged Mr. Dotty early on as a sound expert to examine the facility, to examine sound levels, and he's come into the facility and measured those. We've had several meetings with the neighbors to present our findings, offer different solutions to them, and possible alternatives, and/or this solution here that we're presenting today. UPS has distributed internal manamots, and we've had internal communication with our employees to try and reduce the sound levels. Some of the things that we've done, some of our, well, a mandate, the Department of Transportation requires jockey wagons or shifters to have a backup alarm on them, and we have replaced those backup alarms with a lower version, a lower decibel version, which is a whooshing sound, rather than the normal horn that you would typically hear. We've also, as I said, mentioned to our employees to try and keep noise at a minimum at that side, radios down, and other, we don't have any, we'll say, break areas on the outside near that wall, trying to reduce the noise. And so we've tried to do our best at minimizing the noise with the existing conditions.
Thanks. And if I could just go back to one thing you said, just to make sure that the board understands, you know, that there are various trucks and shifters that are on the property. You know, you did mention shifters. Can you explain that in kind of lay terms to the board so that they understand, you know, the type of movement that's going on?
Correct. So there are, in that process of distribution of packages, packages come in and packages need to go out, and so there's a lot of tractor-trailer movement inside the facility. And we have trailers that move from packages that came in full to a door that would be one that's loaded and then shipped out. And what we use is what's called a jockey wagon or a shifter truck to be able to make that movement inside the yard. They're skilled, and it limited, limits the number of drivers and trucks that are actually in the yard, and that's the purpose of the jockey wagon. So those trailers do have to come in, get loaded, and then they're on their way.
Thank you. And I have no additional affirmative testimony from this witness. If the board and board professionals have any questions?
Mr. Mendel?
What's causing the noise? Is it diesel? Is the shifter a diesel?
Well, yes, it is a diesel. They're large tractor-trailers. They're 53-foot-long trailers. There's 48-foot trailers, and there's 28-foot trailers. But every time a trailer, or a jockey wagon and/or the tractor that's going to, you know, take this load to another building backs in, there is a hookup noise that exists at that time.
It's the hookup noise?
Yeah. That would be primarily...
That's why I was curious, is what was the source of the noise?
Yeah, I think this, our sound expert will discuss that as well.
Thank you.
Any other members of the board?
Is it an overnight operation which would affect, obviously, the people?
Yes. As I said, we process a lot of packages and have for, you know, decades, and this is a 24-hour operation that operates actually seven days a week.
Thank you.
Other members of the board?
Good question, yeah. So you mentioned shifter. Is that a big trailer, small trailer? Does that make a lot of noise?
Yeah, so the shifter itself is not the source of the main noise. It is a, you may have seen them around distribution. It's usually a white cab, and it's really just a driver's seat almost, inside an enclosed block, but he backs up and can hook up to a trailer, and he'll actually walk from his little cab and hook up the hoses for the brakes and so forth. But it's not your conventional over-the-road tractor-trailer. But as far as the engine inside of it, yeah, it's very similar.
How long have you been at this site?
I took over this site in April of 2020, so a little over a year, 15 months.
Okay, did you have a history with this site previously?
I've been to this site before. I mean, I was based out of Pennsylvania, but for the last seven years, I've been building buildings for UPS.
Okay, just wondering if I'm, so then you as somebody with experience with UPS, but not necessarily with this site, I'm just looking to find out if, in your opinion, the site has been as, roughly as noisy as it is, as noise generating as it has been for a substantial period of time?
Correct. So we did make some changes to those backup horns. That is to reduce the amount of noise. I have been, like I said, at UPS for 30-plus years. I'm very familiar with the UPS operations, and we're very consistent. The same tractors we have at this building are the same ones we use at other buildings throughout the country.
So with that experience in mind, it is your opinion that the site has been this noisy or noisier for its entire, pretty much its entire operational existence? Just your opinion?
I'm going to say, in my opinion, yes, we have not made any significant changes to the operation. You know, certainly there are new tractors versus, you know, in 1979. There are no tractors from 1979 on the road right now, but the operation is the same.
All right.
And has been that way for, you know, a number of decades, where we're working three shifts.
Is the volume roughly the same, in terms of, you know, the amount of pieces going through and the 24-hour nature?
Yeah, so, I mean, I can't speak directly to that, although I know that it has been a top 40 hub, and that that volume level has been this way for more than 10 years.
I would imagine that during a pandemic, more people are using the internet to order things and making you guys even busier.
We are busier, but the amount of volume that goes into this building has not changed. As I said, I've been building buildings for UPS over the last seven years, and we just opened a new facility in Cranberry, in Yonkers, right across the Hudson, and a lot of that is to accommodate, you know, the growth that's taking place. We've built, and I built a building in Lynnhurst. I built the building in Newark Airport. So we have done a lot of construction. We built a building here, but that's not processing packages.
I mean, I don't know if you have the numbers, but I would imagine, right, over the years, the volume must have gone up, right, with the online stuff happening and all that. So this building must be having volume organically growing over the...
As an organization, UPS has increased its volume, but this building footprint, the inside of it, is relative, it's the same as what it's been for a number of years. And we have, the way we process packages is we unload them from a trailer, and each one of those is rated at a certain piece per hour. So this has 40 doors, and we, 40 unload doors, so they process approximately 1,000 packages per hour. So that has not changed because we haven't increased the number of unload doors since the building was built.
Mr. Kenji, I don't know, do you have any?
No, nothing else for this. I'm a wave engineer.
Mr. Paul.
Thank you. Are you experiencing this in other facilities as well, with the walls aren't big enough, and are you building bigger walls than the other facilities?
It's...
Or it's just here?
No, I mean, this is the, I'll tell you, this is the biggest wall I have ever built for UPS, for sure.
Okay.
By far.
So I'm just looking for clarification here. So you guys have a wall there now?
Yes.
It's not high enough, so you're going to build a taller one?
That's what the sound engineers asked us to do.
Just want to make sure. We're good. Thanks.
All right, any other members of the board at this time? Counselor?
Thanks. If I could just ask one follow-up question, and just to confirm, the reason that, you know, we're proposing, and UPS is proposing such a high wall is to help combat the sound that's emanating from the property and the resulting noise complaints. Is that accurate?
That's accurate. So if it wasn't for the complaints about the sound, we probably would not be building this wall.
No further questions?
Yep, hold on a second. We're going to ask if the public has any questions on this testimony at this time. Are there any members of the public? Now, as I understand it, they're represented, there are some people here who are represented by an attorney?
No.
Why don't you come forward to the mic, just to lay the groundwork here?
Hi, everybody. My name is Rob Ross. My sole, I'm an attorney with Dorsey and Semrell. We're the municipal attorney for Hanover Township. I'm not here representing these people. These are the neighbors on Vale Road in Hanover, but I'm just here supporting them, basically, on behalf of the township of Hanover. These are the neighbors who have the properties on Vale Road adjacent to UPS facility.
Okay, so and counsel, just want to be absolutely clear, in no way, shape, or form are any of these people that are here tonight clients of Dorsey-Semrell?
You are totally correct.
I knew I'd be. Okay. Okay, so with that in mind, Mr. Vice Chair, we can go back to your prior statement, if any public has any questioning of the witness.
Yes.
Not comments, but questions.
If there are any members of the public that have questions, questions only of this witness at this time, if it's a question for this witness on the testimony he has given, you are more than welcome to come up and identify yourself, give us your address, and ask your question.
My name is John Tykowsky. I live over Vale Road in Whippany.
I apologize, spell your last name.
T-Y-K-O-W-S-K-I. The witness has testified. He's been at the facility for a little bit over a year. I would like to know what his typical working hours are, and how many times he's worked there between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM in the morning, specifically out in the parking lot area, generally near the wall question, which offers very little soundproofing. It's really not a sound wall.
Well, I mean, can you answer the question he asked?
Yeah. Okay, so as I said, yes, I have been at the facility for approximately 15 months. I have worked through the night a few times, probably three. I can't give you the dates. I don't have them written down.
They're not important. Dates are not important.
He's got to answer the question.
He mentioned the parking area. Is he referencing the employee parking area or the trailer parking area?
All right, why don't we get clarification from the gentleman who asked the question about what parking area he was referring to, just that piece?
The parking area that adjoins the properties on Vale Road in Whippany.
With that clarification in mind, can you answer that question, sir?
Yes, so I have been in the yard specifically to listen to the noise or sound that has been a subject of complaint, to listen to see if there is anything out of the ordinary from any other UPS, typical UPS. to listen to see if there is anything out of the ordinary from any other typical UPS facility. And I observed that it is our normal UPS operations and that the horns were changed out, that they are the whooshing sound horns, and did not notice any employee comment, conversation that added to any disturbance. And I have observed that existing fence, to ensure that it's in somewhat, it has been repaired many, many times. But it is a solid wall made of wood.
That was my question, how much time you actually spent.
Okay. Any other questions from the public at this time? If you could please come up and identify yourself and then ask your question.
Hello, my name is Anna Gripp, G.R.I., double P as in Peter. I reside at 12 Vale Road in Whippany. My question for the witness is, you said that there were no expansions. Your UPS is operating in the same building. However, I'm wondering why you did not mention that UPS purchased Saflow next door? And there is a tremendous increase in the number of trucks and traffic and noise with all of the banging and things that are going on next door. I'm just wondering why that was not mentioned?
UPS did purchase the property, the old Saflow, which is seven, or 801 Jefferson. We obtained permits to operate in there and put a conveyor system in there. However, UPS has not operated that facility. It was purchased and put for future expansion and could be used at peak season. The rest, that's near Christmas. And it was constructed at such a time last year, the end of the peak season, that we did not use it.
So the question then, just to follow up on that, is that now the trucks are all parking there and being used and they're being moved around and the banging and the noise has increased. And the light pollution has increased because of the construction that has been done on Saflow as well. So just wondering if you can comment on that. Thank you.
We do park trailers in the existing lot that existed. We have not done any property improvements to the exterior of what we'll call the Saflow building. The yard is exactly the same size. The lighting is the same. We have not made any changes. It exists as if Saflow was still there, which I am not privy to know what they're, when they left the facility. I do not know that. But we have not done any exterior improvements.
So your engineer is gonna comment on the effect of the new wall on the entire property for the...
The sound wall that we're presenting is longer than the existing one to help out.
All right, so it sounds like the real question would be answered by the next witness.
So it'll be, it won't be the civil engineer, but the acoustical engineer.
Acoustical engineer.
And he has an exhibit that shows the difference in sound decibels between a sixteen-foot and a thirty-two-foot wall, including over near that portion of the property.
Is he gonna include discussions of different locations in the property and where different neighbors might be?
So it does, without seeing the exhibit or the track of reference, I believe it does show the various lots within that Vale Road subdivision. So yes, I believe it's answered your question.
Okay.
So you confirmed that UPS is not using this adjacent Saflow property currently? Are there plans to use it in the future if you need it for peak periods?
Well, we do use the yard portion of it to state streetlights. The inside of the facility, we did permit and received occupancy permit for use inside of a conveyor system. But we have not used it so far.
But you could use it at any point if you needed it.
We could use it at any time. But I think you'll see from the sound engineer that the noise really isn't coming from inside the buildings. It's coming from the exterior of the building. And that is very typical of most UPS sites.
All right, any other members of the board, professionals that have...
I just have one question. So this Saflow property question, is this the lot 1.1?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other members of the public that have any further questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none, counselor?
The applicant will now call the next witness, Mr. William Payne, civil engineer for the project.
Do we have a stand up there for that?
There was one.
We do have...
We had a stand up there. Oh, that might have been the previous occupant, but I thought we had.
Yeah, so we are bringing one in. We also have eleven-by-seventeen copies of each of the exhibits for the board.
Look, these were all previously provided as part of the application, right?
They were not, so they'll need to be... Several of them are kind of variations on what was submitted previously.
Do you object to having any of the public have a copy or two to go over that?
No, if there's any remaining copies, they can be reviewed by the public. Would you prefer that we wait until the easel is brought in or...
It's your presentation, but the easel would probably make it easier.
We'll give him a minute. He just ran after his car very quickly.
Funny, because we usually had one hiding over here somewhere.
We can swear him in now if that...
Yeah.
All right, why don't we, we'll proceed while we wait for the easel. We'll get the preliminaries done. Sir, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear firm, tell the truth for this planning board tonight?
Yes.
Okay, can you please state and spell your name for the record, sir?
William Payne, P.A.Y.N.E.
And counsel, as this is an expert witness, why don't you go ahead and put his qualifications on the record? Sure, Mr. Payne, can you please describe your education, experience, qualifications, any professional licenses you hold?
I'm a degree civil engineer from University of Delaware. I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey. I've been working as an engineer for about twenty-two years. And I've been working with UPS for about eighteen of them.
And have you previously been qualified to press your item forward for it?
Yes.
Does the board have any protocols on this level of expertise?
Any questions from the board? No?
Excepted as an expert in the field of civil engineering. And Mr. Payne, can you please confirm that you've been engaged by UPS as the project engineer for this site?
Yes.
And did you prepare the site plans that were submitted to the board?
Yes, in conjunction with our staff.
And similarly, did you and your staff prepare any exhibits for tonight's hearing?
Yes, we prepared three exhibits which are on the board and in your hands, as well as a sample, illustration of a similar type of sample.
And Mr. Wentz, I leave it to you. Do you prefer, and Mr. Vice Chair, do you prefer that we enter all three of the exhibits now or as he's presenting?
All three? I mean...
You can do it as he presents it. You can get up and mark them accordingly as A1, A2, A3, and with today's date. Great. Okay.
I go with what he says, because he's the one that keeps the notes.
Points at me. That works for us. Thank you. And so, Mr. Payne, if you could take the board through this first exhibit, which will mark A1.
Okay, this is an existing conditions plan. So you'll see that this is the outline of the UPS building. And the existing sound wall is this red line that wraps around. And to the south of the UPS is the homes that we've been referring to that have the noise complaint. And so this is the, here are photos. This photo is from the inside of, the outside of UPS property as viewed from the neighbor's side. This is a photo from the inside of UPS property. You can see their trailer and the existing sound wall. And here is another view of the wall, again, from the neighbor's perspective. This is the adjacent lot that they were just giving up. And so the existing, the existing wall stops right here. This is what's being proposed to be demolished and replaced with a new wall, which we have other exhibits to show you.
And just to confirm, so the existing wall stops on lot 1.2 and does not extend onto lot 1.1?
Right, so this, this line right here is the property line. This is lot 1.1. This is lot 1.2. And that wall stops here, quite a few feet shy of 1.1.
And are you able to identify any environmental conditions that are on the site?
We have a drawing that we're about to show, yes. There is a wetlands transition area that we'll show in subsequent exhibits.
Great. And we'll mark, this is exhibit A2. This is the proposed site plan colorized version along with renderings of the wall and a view from the neighbor's property.
So again, this is sort of, this is the proposed, and this plan's a little differently. Here's the, right here is the property line between 1.1 and 1.2. So this is a close-up in the proposed wall. The previous wall ended around here. It's being demolished. And the new wall is extending all the way here into lot 1.1 by over a hundred feet. I can't really do the mention. But what you'll see here is our wetlands delineation. This, the second profile is the elevation of the wall that's being proposed, a tree line, and we have another cross-section to sort of compare the heights of all the various elements that are there. And then these are the perspective from the neighboring properties. And it's, it's hard to see, but there are shaded areas that represent the height of the wall as viewed from the neighbor's property. So you'll see a gray bar in each of these passing through the rear of the homes that suggests the height of the thirty-two-foot proposed wall in the back of the property.
And this will be exhibit A3, which is cross-sections of the proposed wall.
So the point, the point of this is to show the relative. So if you can see, this is the tractor trailer. And the existing wall where it parked, behind it is the proposed thirty-two-foot wall. You can see a comparative height of the trees, that the trees at forty-four feet, mature trees, are taller than the existing wall. The existing wall is thirteen and a half feet tall. The existing lighting was thirty feet tall. We are replacing the existing lighting along this wall with similar thirty-foot-high lighting, but it'll be LED and be directional. So there's zero light pollution going backward into the neighborhood. Okay, in addition to that, there is a new chain-link fence along the property line to help protect the trees and the landscaping between the sound wall and the neighboring properties. And I think that's, I think that's about it.
And just to confirm, and you can see it in these cross-sections as well, but not only is UPS proposing to extend the wall, but they are also proposing to relocate it closer to the property line. Is that correct?
Yes, the wall is being pushed back. When you get closer to the wetlands, we're pushing it back five feet. When you get away from the wetland, we're pushing it back ten feet. And that'll give a little more clearance for the trailers as well, just to avoid any potential impact noise and things like that.
And just while you're, you know, talking about the wetlands and the potential impact, have you had any discussions with the Department of Environmental Protection on this application?
Yes, they've suggested that they are about to approve the transitional area waiver. They wanted us to delineate a little bit more of the wetland beyond what we had shown. So it's really an administrative task, but they've taken no exception to our application and indicated that they will approve it.
And have you had a chance to look through the review memorandum that we received from the board engineer and the board planner?
Yes.
And would you like to go through each of those and any comments that we have not already touched before?
Sure. So I'll start with the planning board and their number. So number one, the applicant should testify regarding the cross-sections of the proposed wall compared to the existing fence. That's this demonstrative, this exhibit, which we will include in a resubmission package. A colorized manufacturer sample of a similar wall and/or a color rendering of the proposed wall should be provided. We have a very sample. We don't have a rendering of the proposed wall, but what you have there is very similar. What's...
And so this is a handout that's in front of the board members? Is that correct? Mr. Payne?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so we'll mark that as A4.
So what you're looking at is, we've designed two versions of the sound wall for pricing purposes. One would either be a precast concrete wall or a cast-in-place concrete wall. But right now, the intention is to have a very simple twelve-inch-thick, thirty-two-foot-tall concrete wall. The color can be colored in any of the standard colors that the concrete manufacturer or precaster provides. Question number two, the applicant should provide an expanded cross-section to depict the relative wall heights in comparison to existing parking lot grades adjacent to the wall and existing UPS buildings. The location of each wall section provided should be clearly indicated on the plan view. The last two, these, these, these section cuts are from, we've identified those in the proposed plan, so we have those for submission. Item number three is the applicant should provide additional wall sections for the end portion of the proposed wall that extends onto lot 1.1. Maybe the planner can go into further as to what they were looking for, but we're happy to provide those cross-sections at the location.
Yeah, just extend.
The wall, the wall is a very similar, it's the same cross-section everywhere, but we're happy to show additional cross-sections as needed. Item, I'm gonna skip over item four, that I think Mr. Ben Dixon testified to that. Item number five, the applicant should provide a full-scale copy of the site survey that is referenced on the plan sheet C2. We'll provide that. We have that. Item, skipping over to item nine, the plan should be amended to more clearly depict the limits of the proposed fencing. You can see that on exhibit two. And we will, and we will resubmit another site plan showing where the new chain-link fencing and the wall will be installed. But the fencing, the intended fencing is to be on the property line, you know, for several reasons. You know, number one being to, you know, help protect the landscaping and the trees right there. Item 10, the limits of the proposed tree removal should be coordinated with the township forester, including any tree replacement requirements. We've been in dialogues. We've received their feedback. We do not have an inventory of the trees. This is a heavily forested area, but we're more than willing to inventory trees for replacement. You know, that's certainly going to be a part of the project is to replace trees that, you know, that were lost due to the construction of the wall.
And just to confirm, that was the forestry's comment as well, that they would do a site survey following construction if the wall were approved and built to advise on what they believe should be landscaped in that area, and the applicant will agree to that.
The applicant should, item 11, the applicant should testify regarding existing lighting and the installation height of the lighting on the new wall installation. So the existing lighting is thirty foot, and it's the old style that are non-directional. And the original wall is thirteen point five. So as you can imagine, there would be a little bit of light pollution. So as you can imagine, there would be a little bit of light pollution into, into the neighborhood. The new wall is 32 feet, which you can see is that the shoeboxes will be mounted to the wall at 30 feet, and they'll be directional, so there'll be zero light pollution. We will be eliminating any light pollution as a result of the construction of this wall. The applicant should testify if the local fire departments have any comments regarding the proposed wall. We have received their comments. They made just some ordinary safety comments such as not keeping the dumpsters within 15 feet of the building and making sure that there's, you know, fire access for the duration of the project. So we received those comments and will obviously comply as well. Item 13, the applicant should testify regarding the estimated time of construction to install the proposed improvements. We haven't gotten the schedule from a contractor yet, but we would estimate it's about a three to six-month project. Some of that depends whether we go precast, where there'd be a longer lead time and faster construction versus cast-in-place, where, you know, there would be, you know, a different, a different schedule for that. The applicant should testify if any utilities will be impacted by the proposed construction activities. This is a very heavily forested area. We don't believe that there's any utilities to be impacted. We're doing a minor amount of lighting work. We will of course do a utility survey as a precondition of any excavation in order to work, but we don't believe that there's any utilities running, running across this wall or, or near the wall. Item number 14, the applicant, oh, I just read that. And I think that, I think that concludes the comments and the questions from Keller and Patrick. The other questions were more pertaining to the ownership.
And with respect to the DFJ planning memo, I believe you also touched already on the landscaping and wetlands and the wall details. If you have any additional questions, the applicant will of course do those.
Yeah, I mean, obviously you'll coordinate with the Township Forester on, on replanting, but are you, are you limited, given the proximity of the wetland and the wetland transition area, to those types of plantings along either side of the wall?
Well, it's a heavily forested area. If you look at the, the transition area, it's really toward the eastern end of the property, so there's plenty of room for replanting.
Okay, okay. And then just one question, actually, wasn't in the memo, just came up on the construction. It seems like you were just indicating that there's a difference in construction time versus, for precast versus cast-in-place. And I'm just thinking about, obviously there's, I'm sure there's cost implications and various other implications for you, but for the neighbors, I would imagine a shorter construction time would be desirable. So I, I don't know if that could come into play in your decision-making on that.
It would, it would, market factors have more to do with it than engineering, which is one of the reasons why you would probably price it, price it both ways.
Right.
But conceptually speaking, the precast, if you were, if you, if both projects were awarded today, they could start digging and excavating and pouring the walls. If you did precast, we could start the excavation and the foundations for it, which will be cast in place. But the precast then would wait, and then, and then we install it at a much faster rate. So in all likelihood, they would both be completed at the same time, but it would be a different sequence of operations.
Okay.
Mr. Cantiano, do you have any?
Um, on, on this exhibit that you provided here, you show it read the, except existing...
That's, that's the existing 13.5-foot wall.
So the, the portion on the east, that's gonna remain existing, no changes to the portion on the east, only along the southerly?
Yeah, yeah, that's remained, that's remained.
And will there be any gaps, or how does this, like, interface between the two? Will the, will the existing wall remain in front of it?
The, the new wall actually basically stops right at, well, if you're looking at the exhibit, it stops right at where the, the corner kind of chamfer is for, thank you, thank you, Nancy. So this, this is, if you, if you look at the existing condition plans, there's a, there's a chamfer in the, in the shape, so the new wall ends at the leading edge of that chamfer.
And the, and the old wall will?
Will remain.
Right. So I guess what I'm asking is, you said the new wall is set back from that. Are you...
Well, except in, in this area, the distance between the new wall and the old wall are very close together because obviously we're keeping our distance from the wetlands.
And it's really a question for the sound engineer where that point came to be, where it used to be.
There's, there's probably less than a five-foot difference between the existing wall and the new wall, so it could easily be returned, you know, back into the existing wall.
Yeah, no, but really the question is of more or less, how was determined that this needs to be 32-foot, and then...
Oh yeah, that's the gold question.
It doesn't need to wrap the corner to go away from the properties, apparently. I, I, well, I'll ask the question to the, the sound engineer, but thank you for that clarification. And then just regarding the wall extending from Lot 1.2 to Lot 1.1, we asked about easements. We would probably recommend an easement in case of one of the parcels being sold, and you still, to the benefit of the other parcel, so you still can maintain this massive wall without having any issues with the property. That would be my recommendation, is to have an easement for maintenance, should in the future one of the parcels be sold.
Good advice.
No other comments?
Okay. Questions of the, from the board?
Mr. Chairman, maybe two. First one is, and I understand the DEPs looked at the, the wetlands, we have some history with, recent history with walls here in our town that haven't gone quite so well. And so my question is, is, is that wetlands sort of like a stormwater passage clearance, or is it sort of like a freestanding wetlands, where, where, or is it one that is actually a conduit for stormwater? And I was a little bit confused about the grating. Is it relatively flat on the neighbor's side of the wall, or how?
It, it generally, the, the slope changes about, you know, perpendicular to the wall, the slope changes, but in general, you'll see that the slope basically slopes toward the east to where this sort of gathers, this low-lying area gathers. So in that, in that sense, it's sort of a stormwater collective.
It is, okay. And so, you know, what, what we saw here was so much wind, that affected some, some walls that needed, that actually came down. And, but it was the, the sort of, you know better than me, but the subsurface erosion, in this case, they were, they're relatively new, and, and the weight of the mud and everything brought to, everything slid out. So you're talking about a wall that weighs at least twice as much as the existing wall. So the question is, if the water flows the same or just increases with climate incrementally with the issues we're faced with there, what happens when you have double the weight on that space?
Well, the, it will be founded very deeply and with a large cantilever, so, and as you presume, the foundation for the 32-foot wall is gigantic compared to the 16-foot wall. The 32-foot wall has, you know, considerable design elements to it because of its height. So all of that has been, we, we were also the structural engineers for the foundation wall, and in our, in our design, we, we've accounted for that.
So it will, will not be affected by seasonal stormwater?
Not at all, not at all.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Wenzel, you have a...
I just want, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, I just want to confirm with Mr. Pontier, that the easement issue that was brought up, that would be, that be a condition that, that your client would agree to?
Absolutely, yeah. We can do a cross-section, a cross-section.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Vice Chair, actually, it was more for Mr. Cantiano. Are you satisfied that this wall is gonna stay up?
This wall is now struck, subject to structural review, but yeah, absolutely, they have to go through building department review, they need geotechnical analysis, I don't know if you've done any of that yet, but it's a big wall, and it needs a very...
And again, our history with big walls.
Our history of big walls is typically retaining walls, I think, which are...
This is a freestanding wall, it's like a large sign. But to, to, to your point on that, you had mentioned deep foundation, you, you, you show a limit of disturbance, basically a 1 to 1 or limited disturbance. Is there any reason why you would think you would not be able to do the work that you need to do with the, both kinds of foundations, the precast or the cast-in-place, to get your foundations in within that limited disturbance?
No, 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 that's, we're comfortable with that.
And when you said deep foundation...
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't mean piles. I meant deeper than the, than the, we have, we have soil, we have some soil going down. They are, they are not founded on the wet, wetland soil.
Okay, and are these, you, from your geotechnical work, was this, are these gonna be piles, or are they going to be a spread footing?
Spread footings, spread footings with cantilevers.
And approximate the depth below grade?
It changes, I don't have the section cuts with me, but I think we were looking at nine or 10 feet.
And you'll, you'll have to follow, obviously, OSHA requirements for during and getting down to that, that depth, the mooring and all, all the way.
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, when I'm listening to this, it sounds like the, the sound walls that the federal government puts up during, for highways, is similar to what you're gonna be doing.
Similar, yes.
Okay. Mr. Mealy?
Yes. The photo shows a sample wall color and texture. This is not meant to show a 32-foot-high wall, is it?
I'm not certain how, we were trying to address the comment, you know, not having the information, so we very simply went online and found a very plain concrete retaining wall. I couldn't tell you how tall that particular wall is.
I wouldn't want someone to be misled to think that's a 32-foot-high wall. You're talking three stories.
Yeah. It's a tall wall.
Okay, any other members?
Yep.
Apollo Towne.
Thank you. Will you have to use any of the properties on Vale Road to do any construction?
No.
Never at all?
Not at all, never.
It'll all be done from your property?
Exactly.
Okay, and then on the first Exhibit A1 or 1A, the red wall that goes all the way around to the east side, is that eastern part gonna be dismantled, or just the southern part?
Yeah, I, I think somebody else asked the same question, so this portion of the wall will remain, this chamfer piece will remain, and the new wall starts at the bottom of this chamfer and continues on over to 1.1.
Thank you.
Okay. Other members? No? All right, very good, we're gonna go to the public for questions. Are there any members of the public who have questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? If you could identify yourself and your address.
Rob Ross Meisel, 341 Pavonia Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey. I was just, this might be a question also for the acoustical engineer, and I don't know, Mr. Pontier, if you said they were going to also be calling an acoustical engineer, but I would like to ask it of the civil engineer as well. It's my understanding from the neighbors that up until a certain point in the last couple of years, some of the neighbors had been filing complaints with the county health official pursuant to NJAC 7:29-1, which sets a decibel limit on noise that is permitted to emanate from any industrial, commercial, or community service facility measured from a residential property line. It's my understanding that notices a violation and fines it issued to UPS by the county health official resulting from those complaints. And it's my understanding that UPS had been, begun to work with the neighbors on plans to mitigate the noise, and some of the plans that were discussed were this wall, the 32-foot wall, also 16-foot wall, and that the neighbors and UPS had hoped to work together cooperatively whereby UPS would construct this wall, which might not bring UPS fully into compliance with all of the New Jersey statutes and administrative code on decibel levels, but that something else might be done for the residents, something else might be worked out cooperatively whereby the residents would be able to agree to this. And I'm wondering now if, because our understanding had been that 32-foot wall wouldn't necessarily bring the facility into compliance with all the New Jersey statutes and the New Jersey administrative code on noise, and I'm wondering if the civil engineer understands now that the 32-foot wall will bring the facility into compliance with all of the state law, and if it won't, then I wonder what would be the point of constructing this, this wall when the neighbors who have kind of courteously, courteously held back on filing complaints pursuant to NJAC 7:29-1, they could simply resume filing their complaints, and UPS would again, again begin to be cited for the noise violations of the facility. If this wall won't bring the facility fully into compliance, then why would you proceed with the plan? And, and otherwise, will it bring the facility fully into compliance with all New Jersey laws on the decibel limits for these facilities?
Okay, so, never ask, and turn to ask the question. So the, the question that was asked is, in essence, at the end of the day, about whether this planned wall will bring the facility into compliance with various New Jersey laws and regulations. Mr. Payne, are you able to answer that question as counsel has proposed, partially or fully? And if not, Mr. Pontier can identify who perhaps could answer that question.
No, I can't.
That's a question that's better suited for the acoustical engineer.
Okay, I would ask Mr. Pontier to take counsel's question, very pointed question about various rules and regulations into context when you have your acoustic engineer testify, so that it can satisfy counsel's questions.
Absolutely, that'll be addressed in, in our next expert's affirmative testimony. If I could just ask if the question was on behalf of the Township of Hanover?
Yes, yep, it was on behalf of the Township of Hanover.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, how about? We've got other members of the public?
They gotta come.
Yep.
Hello again, Anna Grip, 12 Vale Road. I have two questions on the testimony of the witness. One is that the witness mentioned there will be absolutely zero light or no light pollution from the lights that will be on top of the wall. My question is, is can the witness explain if there is no light pollution and the wall proposal is right at the property line, the difference between the park, the parking lot, the end of the parking lot, and the property line is quite a ways? Why would UPS need to have lights on top of the wall that far away from the parking lot? And part B of that is, if you're underneath the light, the wall is gonna be very, very high. So I can understand if you could put something around the light to keep it from emanating backwards, but if you're under it, that's a whole different matter. So I'm just wondering, you know, part A and part B of that question again, first is, why do you need lights so far back if it's so far away from the parking lot? And B, how can you, how can UPS guarantee that there will be no light pollution?
If I could just do a point of clarification quickly, the question indicated that the lights in the wall, the proposed wall, is not, sorry. The question indicated that the proposed wall is at the property line, which is incorrect. There's about a 32-foot buffer between the property line and where the wall is proposed, and the, the parking lot will extend up to where the wall is proposed.
So let me just comment on that, if you don't mind.
Oh, we're asking...
The, the question, the, I could show you the picture of the proposed wall, and the, one of the variances is that there would be not even a six-inch difference between the edge of the property and the wall. That is one of the variances that was requested.
Ms. Grip, perhaps I can, as a, for a point of clarification, because I know that's somewhat, a little bit confusing. So we'll have, I'll ask Mr. Payne to clarify that, that six-inch issue as well, because I think he'll answer that question rather quickly for you, and then he'll answer the other questions to the degree that he can.
So this, this is the property line between 1.2 and 1.1, so the wall is crossing that property line. But the property line for 1.1 is about 32 feet or so away from the proposed wall. So if we come back, if we come back to this one, sorry Nancy, I'll do this. If we come back, if we come back to this one, here's the, here's the, try to, here is the property line, right here where the fence is, and here's the wall. And in this section cut, you can see here's the property line with the chain-link fence, and then 30 feet or so to the new wall, this is the existing wall, and you can see that there is truck parking right against the wall, which is, you know, why this light is needed to illuminate this area where the trucks are backing up, almost right up against this wall.
So just to be clear, Mr. Payne, to... So just to be clear, Mr. Payne, to answer Ms. Grip's question about that six-inch issue, that's an issue between?
1.1 and 1.2.
Right, and not between UPS lots and the Vale Road lots?
That's correct.
Because it crosses.
No problem, Ms. Grip.
So can you answer the question on the lights now?
So, so the lighting, you know, this is a 32-foot wall, these lights will be mounted at 30 feet, which is the height they're mounted at now. But this time, you'll have a wall behind it, and these lights will be directional. And as you can see from, uh, the location of this tractor-trailer, uh, parking, the lighting is absolutely needed here so that the trucks can safely back up and park, and, and people can walk around and, and hook up and disconnect, and so on and so forth. So this light is for the purpose of illuminating this area where the, uh, uh, jockey trucks are, are, are working.
So the light will be approximately two feet below the, the absolute top of the wall?
Will be two feet below the absolute top of the wall, and will be projected, will be directional, will be aimed in this direction. And there are LEDs, so that they don't spread. Yeah, there, yeah.
Okay. Other members of the public who have questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? If you could identify yourself and ask your question, please.
John Tykowski, 4 Vale Road, Whippany. My question deals with, uh, my lot, which is 4 Vale Road, 8803, and specifically where the new wall-
Please speak into the mic, please.
-will be relative to the old wall. And then-
Sir, can you do us a favor? You, you're gonna have to move the mic up so that we can hear you a little bit more clearly? And if you can repeat that question, I just don't think our, our board secretary got it.
Very good. My concern is where the new wall will be located relative to the existing wall.
So for the most part, um, this is the existing wall. If you're, if you're on the western side, I'm, I'm not sure.
I'm on the eastern side.
You're over here.
I'm all the way down by the chamfer.
Okay. So then, the, the, the new wall will be only five feet from the old one?
In which direction?
Uh, closer to the property line.
So it'll be, it'll be infringing or encroaching more on my property?
Well, it's still, it's still over 30 feet from the property line.
I understand that. My question was, it'll be encroaching further on my property. And the reason I'm asking this is because when you have your sound engineer testifying next, that's an important point.
Any other questions, sir?
No, that's, that clarifies that. I don't, I don't think there's anything more he could add to it. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that have a question of this witness at this testimony at this time? Come on up, please, and identify yourself and your, uh, address.
Um, my name is David Nguyen. Last name is spelled H-U-Y-N-H.
Could you please speak up?
Keep your voice up.
Yeah. Last name is Nguyen, H-U-Y-N-H. I'm at 8 Vale Road. Um, my question is, uh, there seems to be, uh, there seems to have been a lot of analysis done, um, from an engineering perspective, um, in the interests of what UPS is looking for. Um, and I guess my question is, what type of analysis has been done, um, to understand what the collateral repercussions, uh, are going to be, uh, to the neighbors, and how it's gonna negatively impact us, uh, both in terms of, uh, the fact that it doesn't actually fully abate the noise levels, um, and also we didn't talk about the seismic forces that resonate, uh, through our homes, uh, which feel like many earthquakes. Um, and, you know, also, uh, you mentioned it's heavily forested, but as you can see in the pictures, there's a lot of touch-up, and you didn't take photos of theirs that aren't heavily forested. And also aesthetically, just driving in, uh, to your home that you live in and looking at this giant wall that I had never planned to have in my backyard.
Only question, sir?
Okay, sorry.
Okay. So, uh, Payne, did you hear those questions?
I heard the questions, so I think, I think some of the answers are gonna come from the acoustic engineer in terms of the analysis. Uh, certainly, it's a very tall wall, and there were several iterations from 16 to 32. 32 is the tallest practical wall you can build for, you know, many reasons, as you, as you can imagine, uh, you know, and that's why we endeavored to show sort of the, the rendering of, of the height and the tree lines and so on and so forth to show its impact. So, uh, you know, certainly, we're very sensitive to it, but, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's the tallest wall that you can build to abate the most amount of noise. Our role in the project was to make sure that the civil engineering and the structural engineering were suitable for that purpose, and I think the acoustic engineer will talk about the methodology for, for abating as much noise as is, as is practical.
So, Mr. Pontier, you, once again, that you've heard the question, perhaps you'll have your other expert ready to answer the gentleman's questions.
Yeah, I think the acoustical engineer, uh, our next witness, will likely have, uh, be better able to answer that question. But just to confirm, uh, for Mr. Payne, uh, you, you did prepare, you know, the renderings and the analysis, the cross-sections and analysis showing, you know, what this proposed wall will look like-
Yeah.
-from the Vale Road residents. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, and, and it shows that the mature trees that are there, that I believe are 40 feet and above, will in fact be taller than the proposed wall?
They will be taller than the proposed wall, and we understand there's gonna be a fair amount of planting of new trees as well to compensate for areas that might be sparse and/or trees that will be removed in the process of construction. So planting new trees is, is absolutely part of the, the plan of the project. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other members of the public that have questions? If you wish to come back up for another question, please.
John Tykowski, 4 Vale Road, Whippany. My question is, why are you moving the wall five feet closer to my property rather than just replacing it in the same spot where you're removing the other wall?
But, it's off operation. Well, it's, uh, both operational and probably better suited for the acoustical engineer, as well as the location of the wall has to do with how effective the wall is.
What activity is occurring on the other side of the wall that you're not telling us about?
I could ask, the, the question that was asked, I think Mr. Pontier is indicating that his other expert may be able to testify to, but the question is to Mr. Payne, does, would Mr. Payne be able to answer the gentleman's question?
I think the acoustic engineer is probably better able to answer the question. In terms of operations, the only operation along this wall is, is trucks backing, trucks backing up, you know, up to it. So, you know, in terms of operational, there are no operational changes, uh, in terms of constructing the wall.
Did you have another question?
No, I just didn't feel that one was adequately answered, as far as why the wall has to be moved five feet closer.
They answered it to their best abilities at this point, and we've got another witness who's gonna be answering the question as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, are you reverting to us to ask questions now?
Uh, I'm gonna just ask one last. Are there any other members of the public have questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Now, Mr. Neely.
With respect to the trailer that you just mentioned as backing up towards the wall, will there be bollards there to prevent the trailer from hitting the wall?
Uh, there'll be, there'll be curving.
Curving along the-
Correct.
-ground to prevent the tires from going over.
Correct.
From, from an operations perspective, and maybe this will help answer Mr. Tykowski's question, from an operations perspective, is it fair to say that by moving the wall backwards, that the trucks will have more room to operate on site?
That's correct.
And less likely to hit the wall and cause other noise?
Yes.
Okay. Any other members of the-
Some more.
Mr. Apolatano?
Uh, you said you're gonna plant more trees?
Yes.
Are they native trees?
Uh, we're gonna work with your forester to determine.
Thank you.
That's already a, uh, just, so I remind Mr. Apolatano, that's already been agreed to be a condition of approval that the applicant will work with the forester about the nature and type of trees that are gonna be, uh, removed and replaced in that area to ensure that they are appropriate for the township of Whippany's goals.
Okay. Other members, uh, Mr. Ken Giano, do you have anything further? Ms. Pabata, you good? All right, uh, move on to your next witness.
Great, thank you. Uh, the next witness that we'd like to call is, uh, Mr. Norman Doti.
Do you swear for and tell the truth before this planning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
I'm Norman Doti, D-O-T-T-I, from Russell Acoustics, Point Pleasant, New Jersey.
In fact, that's the first time, I think, I've just had to actually swear somebody in that was standing. We've all gotten used to sitting down. Um, uh, okay, so, Mr. Pontier, why don't you put, uh, Mr. Doti's qualifications on the rec, uh, on the record, please?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Doti, can you please, uh, describe your education, experience, qualifications, and the professional licenses you hold in the state of New Jersey?
Sure. I have a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering from Stevens Institute of Technology, a master's from NJIT, and I does postgraduate courses on acoustics. I've worked as a consulting acoustical engineer for 50 years. Uh, I'm a appointed member of the New Jersey Noise Control Council. I've testified at local boards such as this, uh, local courts, county courts, state courts, and federal court in New Jersey as an expert in acoustics. I've done classified work in acoustics for the Department of Defense. I developed and taught the Advanced Noise Control Course for the OSHA Training Institute for 10 years, and, uh, clients include municipalities, where I worked for the boards, uh, developers, manufacturers, shopping centers, private individuals.
Thank you. We'd like to offer him as an expert in acoustical engineering.
For the objects. Oh, and I have testified in this year before.
Well, to back.
Thank you. It's been a few years.
Burger King? Nothing, you just-
It's been several. After 50 years, sir, it sort of blurs together.
We had a big acoustical engineer discussion with a Burger King application a long time ago.
And, and Mr. Doti, have you been engaged by UPS for this project?
Yes.
Uh, and, and did you prepare any exhibits in connection with tonight's application?
Yes, I did. It's, uh, a whole board there, the poster.
Great, and we're gonna mark this as A5, which is a comparison of, uh, sound decibels, uh, with a 16-foot wall and a 32-foot wall coming from the second floor of a home on Vale Road.
Brief but accurate description.
Uh, and can you please describe for the board, uh, the, the work that you've done for this project? Any site visits you may have made, the analyses you undertook, and your findings?
Internally, I've, I've worked on the project for several years. I've been out to the site, uh, within the UPS property several times, uh, outside, around the building, measuring, uh, the various kinds of trucks. When I say measuring, talking about measuring the sound levels, uh, for use in calculations, and inside the building. And I've been on residential properties, uh, that you see on the southern side of that exhibit, uh, measuring sound in backyards and including up at the second floor, uh, bedroom window level. That turns out, that's an important location.
And can you describe, um, the difference in, in measuring the sound from the, the ground floor versus the second floor?
Well, the, we heard a, a brief rendition earlier of what the NJAC 7:29, uh, supposedly says regarding, uh, sound level limits. It's out or within the property, but it also is based on where people, to use the state word, habitate. And at night, typically, they're in, sleeping in their bedrooms. And so, and, and the state even discusses this in a, a document that they put out, what's referred to as the guidance document, published by DEP, on, it's for enforcement people on when and how to make measurements. And some people think it's, well, the limits just apply at the property line. And that's simply not true. In this situation, if you measured at the property line right now, you'd have a barrier between you and the sound source, and you would be getting the most effect from the barrier. With the barrier, you can actually get higher sound levels further back from the barrier and at higher elevations, because you get less shielding from the barrier. Barrier casts what's referred to as an acoustical shadow. So the elevation plays into the reduction in sound from the barrier based on the, the sound source, its location, and the sound receivers and its location, location being distance from the barriers and also elevation. So that's why we wanted to look at, uh, sort of the worst case, well, not sort of, we looked, wanted to look at the worst-case scenario of namely, second-floor bedroom level window for the residential folks.
Great. And, and as part of your engagement, did you analyze various wall heights and locations to place the wall?
Yes, quite a few. Uh, we looked at heights of 16, 20, 24, 28, and 32 feet, uh, and, and different horizontal positions as far as putting it where the wall is now and then moving it a little bit. Uh, the existing wall, if you, if you actually don't look at it, as I have, clearly has been hit multiple times. Uh, I, I based that on seeing holes knocked in it. So they need some, it's, to me, reasonable that they wanna offset the wall slightly in order to reduce damage to the wall, not just the sound banging into it, but potentially damaging the wall. Uh, the, the, the difference between where it is, where the wall is now, I'm just talking about location, not height, the difference between where it is now and moving it slightly, five feet slightly, is, is, it, it's, you could calculate it, you couldn't measure it for here the difference.
And, and is it fair to say that a 32-foot wall, as you heard the civil engineer testify to, is, is about the highest wall that, that they can construct? So is it fair to say that a 32-foot wall sound barrier provides the best opportunity to reduce sound emanating from the property?
Of the different choices available, yes, because it's the tallest. Now, what people forget, too, is that obviously, sound goes over the top of the wall and the wall prevents it. But sound also goes around the ends of the wall. If you actually study it, you, it almost like it's oozing around the edges. So a wall typically has to extend beyond what you, where the, where the sound-producing activity is. Uh, so that's one reason why it's, uh, it's longer. As far as height goes, uh, yes, taller gives you more reduction. And especially when you have this, the second-floor bedroom window level, we figure that at an elevation of 15 feet. So really, compared to the second-floor bedroom window level, the, the wall is not 32 feet, it's 15 feet less than that. So you, you could have a, a wall that you construct in a valley, it doesn't matter what the bottom is, or it doesn't matter what the, the height of the physical wall is, it matters what's the top of the wall relative to the sound source and the sound receiver. So those are factors that we took into account. We, we measured multitude of trucks out there, as I mentioned, in the backyard at the UPS facility, and we'll use that data as a function of frequency, I might add, because barrier effects are very frequency-dependent. And did a series of calculations. We use a computer program called Sound Plan, which implements the, there's an ISO, International Standards Organization, uh, standard, 9613-2, which talks all about the propagation of sound outdoors, reflections, terrain, barriers, et cetera. And what we see on the exhibit is a sound level contour map. Uh, it's based on trucks moving around the site, around the building, and in this particular plot, it's a, it's really a differences in sound levels plot, not an absolute level. We took, we calculated the model for 16-foot-high barrier, second-floor bedroom window, and then 32-feet-high, second-floor bedroom window. Everything else is the same, then we subtract one from the other. And the difference in sound level with the second-floor bedroom window over where the houses are is around, I mean, plus or minus one or two, but it's around an 8 dB A difference. So between making the wall 16 feet high by raising it to 32 feet at the second-floor bedroom window, we're getting an additional, on top of what it already does, an additional about an 8 dB A reduction. That is a noticeable, audible reduction. A 10 dB A reduction would be considered a halving of the perceived sound level. So it's, it's a non-trivial change, and we're trying to, I'm trying to maximize, uh, the reduction for the neighbors. Now, we also, as you, as you heard testimony earlier, uh, we, we recommended the change in the backup alarms from the classic beep, beep, beep to the, uh, what's referred to as broad- from the classic beep-beep-beep to the, what's referred to as broadband or multi-spectral alarms. The description was a wishing sound, that's a very accurate description. How people operate, they have to be careful about the... Clearly, I'm anticipating a question, and maybe I shouldn't, but, you know, will this bring them into compliance? And the answer is, it depends on what they do. If people go out there and bang on the side of trailers with Probars, that's going to make a noise, and it's not going to be in compliance. But this makes a substantial change in what's out there now. And with, we have the backup alarm change, and if they're careful about their operations, which I've counseled them on, then they should be able to comply.
So I think that there's two pieces here to this puzzle, and so the first, your exhibit may not be helpful, but just to confirm, as you noted, the existing wall, and as you heard from the civil engineer, the existing wall is 13 and 1/2 feet. When you visited, you know, it was not in 100% perfect condition. So a replacement of that wall in and of itself, as the first question, would be a significant enhancement. Is that correct?
If you replace the existing wall with a 13 and 1/2-foot-high wall with solid construction, would it be better? It would be better because you're plugging up holes. The existing wall appears to be a product called Plywall. It's commercially available, sound barrier, it's a fine material. It's basically two sheets of T-111 plywood on a 2x4 frame, and if that sounds flimsy, it's fine as a sound wall. It's used all over the place. But it's been there for a long time, and it's in disrepair, and it's been hit, as you say, there's holes in it, so closing it up, replacing it with the same product, or concrete or anything, would be a slight improvement.
And then by, and your exhibit is helpful in this, in the next question, and by increasing the wall to 32 feet, does, as you said, make a substantial and noticeable difference in the sound decibel?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct. An audible difference at the bedroom window level, even more down below.
And so as you point out, that what is shown here is from the second level, so on the ground level, there would be even more of a reduction in the sound.
Correct. It's typically about a 2 dB a difference.
Okay. And in counseling the client over these past few years, would you be comfortable in saying that the 32-foot wall, as it's proposed, is the best opportunity for the client to bring the sounds emanating from the site into compliance?
If 32 feet is the limit for structural reasons, soil mechanics reasons, things like that, then yes. If you make it lower, you will not get as much sound reduction.
Great. And I have no further questions for you. Is there anything else that you would like to put on for the board?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. And I also believe that he answered at least one of the questions in the engineering memorandum that was open on the need for the proposed wall height, but we would like to open up for questions to the board and board professionals.
Mr. Canjiano, do you...
Just to follow up my earlier question, was the 32-foot wall stops at that jog in the wall, it changes direction. Evidently, my question is, do you need that wall to go any further, or does it meet its requirements where you're trying to achieve?
Well, we did make it longer, up onto the dot one block to the left.
Correct. I think, my question was on the right, it just struck me, and I'm, I'm not questioning, it was just a question, on the southeast corner, where, even where it goes from being green and to orange, right there, is there any concern, I mean, are you guys shortchanging your, should that wall be extended further? That was only part of my question.
In brief, no. I think it's fine the way it is. We look at various scenarios.
Well, you did mention that the sound goes, bends around a little.
But there is a wall there now, and the wall will remain, so that wall that remains...
But there's a 13-foot difference between the old wall and this new wall.
Right.
So the sound, this last house over here on that eastern side, if you're saying a sound can bend around the wall, it's going to be bending around above the shorter wall on the east side.
The model shows that, what it's doing. That model has not just the new proposed wall in it, but also the wall along the side.
I know, I know. But the 32-foot wall ends at a point, at that point, you have a 16-foot wall continuing the line.
Yep. Can you hear me?
You gotta bring the mic.
It appears to be. So last house here, you notice, this is this line right here that I'm pointing to, that's 8 dB reduction right there. So this wall extending down to here before it runs into the shorter wall is allowing sound to wrap around here to a point, but then you can see it very rapidly falls off to four, six decibel reductions, eight decibel reductions over there.
Okay.
So it's, we could make the thing much longer and much taller, and it would provide some more sound reduction.
You're saying that even if it wraps around, it won't wrap around to reach that house?
Well, it does, but compared to what it is with the 16-foot wall in there, it's still 8 dB, 7 to 8 dB quieter at that last house.
Okay.
Just a quick question on the exhibit. Is it fair to characterize this as conservative, given that it's actually a 13 and 1/2-foot wall that's there, but you've calculated it based on 16 feet?
You're correct.
Okay. So ideally, or actually, more than ideally, it should be, factually, should be better than what's shown on the exhibit. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And what I use for sound levels for the sound sources, I don't round down, I round up. So I try to be conservative in my calculations. Actually, this is a worst-case scenario in that if you can imagine a truck driving by, whatever sound it puts out as it moves along at various locations, at various houses, for example, in the backyard, there's some maximum sound level somewhere as that truck goes by, considering reflections off the building and the houses and the barrier and all that stuff, there is some maximum sound level. This is a plot, not of average sound levels, but maximum sound levels. So we've worst-cased it that way as well.
Thank you.
Do members of the board have any questions? Mr. Mando?
Okay. I just want to be clear. Your testimony is that barring the workers taking sledgehammers or Probars to the truck, that they will be in full compliance with the noise regulations of the state?
Between the controls that have been implemented or proposed to be implemented and watching how they operate in the yard, they should be able to comply, and in fact, they have to comply.
Okay, that's one question. Second question is, is there any type of coating that could be applied to the concrete to further reduce the noise levels?
No.
Okay.
What, sound, when you have a barrier, there's two mechanisms that are happening. The obvious one is what's going over the top, let's forget the sides, okay? And that's a function, really, of the height of the barrier, and notwithstanding different heights of the source and receiver. Once the, but you also have sound going through the barrier. So you don't want to, but that has to be enough of a reduction so that it's what goes over the top that's the limiting factor. So you can't make the barrier out of chicken wire, for example, because a lot of sound still goes through it. But once you're massive enough, it does have to be solid. It can't be a staggered board fence or something like that. Once it's solid enough, making it more solid doesn't do any good at all. So I was, you know, that this is 12 inches of concrete, if you made it 24 inches of concrete, it wouldn't be any better.
No, I was thinking something like Styrofoam on a wall.
Well, Styrofoam, no. Actually, you happen to trip across a pet peeve of.
Okay.
Styrofoam is a closed-cell foam. It's a lousy acoustical material because, A, it's closed cell, so it's not an absorber, and it doesn't have mass, and that's how you stop sound from transmitting through, is mass. So the worst foam you can pick is Styrofoam.
Okay, how about a carpet?
Again, you're not a, well, actually, carpet's not very good either, but it's better than Styrofoam. So what if we put a sound absorber on it, would that affect the barrier characteristics? No, because it's not reflections off of the barrier. An absorber is not a sound magnet. It doesn't draw the sound in, preventing more of it from going over the top.
Okay. Thank you. Got it answered.
Other questions, Mr. Ponteira?
Yep, thank you. Thank you for your testimony. So on average, one of the UPS trailers that's driving by behind the wall, what decibel level is that at?
I'm sorry, say it again.
So what is the average decibel level of a truck driving by?
I don't recall.
So then, what is the, the wall there means it'll be 14 decibels less? I'm trying to understand the graphic here.
No. The difference is between, if we put a 16-foot-high wall versus a 32-foot-high wall, how much does that extra height reduce the sound over a 16-foot wall, which is a little better than a 13 and 1/2-foot wall?
Okay.
Okay. Other questions by members of the board?
I believe, Mr. Ponteira, one of the questions from the audience tonight dealt with a question about seismic. He used the term seismic, so...
I heard that.
I'm sure the gentleman would come up again, but he used the term seismic. Do you want to, can you address that gentleman's question? Did you hear that one from before?
I alerted on the question. I do a lot of warehouses, trucking operations, all those things involving over-the-road tractor-trailers in, and I had specifically measured vibration related to those activities, both on the road as well as in distribution centers and things like that. It simply is not an issue. You have a smooth, rolling truck over a paved surface, it doesn't make vibration that you can feel.
So if they were to feel it, it would be because the truck hit something?
I guess that's one explanation.
Okay, and you testified that by moving the wall back, you've taken one potential target of the truck hitting something and removed it from its field of danger?
I suppose with that footing that we have down in there, if you really whacked into the wall, and that potentially would cause something, I don't know that they could actually feel that. Maybe. I've never measured that particular scenario. I've measured others, but not that.
So as long as the yard is kept smooth, and as long as they don't hit anything, there shouldn't be any seismic activity coming from this at all?
No, and I base that on multitude of those type of operations that I've measured over the years.
Okay. Members of the board? Other members of public who have questions of this witness at this time? They have to be questions, please.
My name is David Nguyen, last name is spelled H-U-Y-N-H. I'm at 8 Bell Road. So the question about the seismic noises, they're very disruptive, it's more of a vibration, and the question I have is, are you familiar with the trailers being offloaded and dropped on the ground, and the type of noise that makes, not necessarily the rolling of the tire wheels of the truck?
Well, that, with all due respect, that's not seismic. Seismic is vibration in the ground, okay? Just so we're clear on terminology there. If certain, if you drop a trailer or bang into a trailer, then there's going to be a bang, an audible sound. And part of how one needs to operate a yard is to minimize or ideally not banging trailers.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Are you an expert in measuring vibrations? Are there different instruments to use when you're measuring vibrations? As us, myself, the neighbors have addressed multiple times to UPS.
I have not measured vibration at UPS, as I talked about before. I have measured specifically truck operations vibrationally. And yes, it's different equipment than UPS for measuring sound.
Okay. I have another question. Would there be a better reduction in decibels if the wall was moved closer to the UPS property?
As I said before, I looked at where the wall is now versus moving it to the proposed location, and the difference in sound level is a fraction of a decibel. You can't, and moving it closer to UPS, it's right now, it's, I don't know the exact distance, literally just a few feet from the curb line, close enough that trucks are going to bang into it. So if you move it closer to UPS, then you have more of that. You also run into a problem because you have a building behind the UPS building, that's a reflecting surface. So as you start to, as you move a wall in, there's sort of that, there's a limitation there because sound is energy, and there's this thing in engineering called conservation of energy. And when you start bringing a wall in closer to a building, that energy has to go somewhere, and it actually gets less sound reduction from a barrier as you start to get closer to the wall.
So are you suggesting that the five-foot difference of where the current wall is and the new proposed wall would yield a better sound reduction?
No, I said that the difference in sound where the barrier is now and where the barrier is proposed to be now is unmeasurable.
Is it possible that if the wall was built where the exact location of the current wall is, that you would achieve better sound reduction compared to the numbers that you showed?
I don't recall the numbers, but the change would be, again, a fraction of a decibel.
It is possible.
It's possible that it could be a fraction of a decibel better, or be a fraction of a decibel worse.
Is it generally known when you're doing sound studies and building walls, that closer the wall barrier or sound barrier is to the source of the wall, the general correlation of that sound reducing is positive?
As the barrier is closer to the source, ignoring the reflections off of the building, which you can't do, then the more the sound source is tucked into the wall, just as the more the receiver is tucked into the wall, the more sound reduction you get. And that's a calculatable thing.
Okay.
Thank you for answering the question.
Other members of the public with questions for this witness on this testimony at this time?
And a grip, 12 L Road, Whippingy. Question for the witness, in terms of the vibrations of the houses that we're experiencing, whatever the vibration, however you want to characterize it, I characterize it something like an Air Force jet flying over my house when it hits Mach 5. How would we measure that? How can we measure that vibration? What is your recommendation on that?
Well, it's... What you are perceiving in the house is sound.
You gotta have, sir, you gotta have the mic with you. I know you want to look at the witness, which is...
What you're perceiving is sound. You measure sound with a sound level meter, which is what I have done and what the county has done.
The county, yes, they've measured, but the perceived sound, though, I mean, doesn't measure the impact on when the house rattles. So how would you, like, what decibel would that be? How can we characterize that?
The published data and my experience on house rattle occurs at levels, you need to be around 105 dB a and higher. to be around 105 dBa and higher. I have not found anything like that, and the county data that I've seen is nothing like that.
Some of us have experienced house rattling significant.
All right, you can, after, after all of this is done, the public can come up and testify as to what they've experienced. All right. We have any other questions here?
Yes, sir.
Hi. John Tykowski, 4 Vale Road. I live at the corner lot down there where you say the wall doesn't need to be wrapped around, and you're not concerned about the decibel level if the wall is not extended around that corner some distance?
The proposed wall and the existing wall together reduce the sound with a 32-foot-high versus a 16-foot-high. At that corner house, about eight decibels.
How many days did you spend in our backyard properties making noise collection data?
My recollection, I was out there on two nights.
Two nights, okay. And what hours were you collecting the data?
Midnight-ish, plus or minus an hour.
Till what time?
Midnight, plus or minus an hour. So about 11:00, 11:00 to 1:00, things like that, definitely at night.
No, I understand.
And so we're clear too. I'm not an enforcement person. You understand that?
No, no, I'm simply finding out or establishing that you've spent approximately four hours collecting the data that you're presenting here.
Well, no, more than that, because there's also data from within the UPS facility itself.
Excuse me, but I'm only concerned with the data, the noise that's emanating coming towards my house.
Okay, I understand that. But the data, well, you made the representation that the data I'm presenting is from the measurements made behind the houses, and that's only partially true.
You failed to state conclusively that you.
Is this a question?
This wall will not come into compliance or full compliance with the state. It's conditional.
Of course it's conditional. Depends what they do on the site.
I understand that, okay, but the purpose is that they're going through a lot of expense and everything else, and if it turns out they're not in compliance, I just did not hear you emphatically say they would. It was just a statement that it was, would be conditional. And going back to Anna's thing, there are impact noises going on over there, and I don't think in a four-hour study.
Question.
Come on, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. How many days or how many nights a week do you think it's appropriate to be woken up from a sound sleep because of an impact noise?
I gotta rule that that's not way outside this gentleman's level.
No, no, I agree, I agree. I can save that for later on. That's essentially it at the moment. I do appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you for your time.
Any other questions from members of the public this time? Counselor?
Excuse me, Mr. Dottie. I thought he was talking to the gentleman in Jersey State.
Too many terms.
Thank you.
Okay, and I see Mr. McDonough is making his way up.
Yes, at this time, we'd like to call our planner.
It was a pleasure seeing Mr. McDonough. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth before it's planning for tonight, Mr. McDonough?
Yes, I do.
All right. Mr. McDonough, please state his value of the record.
I wasn't supposed to do that, was I? It's okay. Hi, everyone. My name is John McDonough. My name is spelled M-C, capital D-O-N-O-E-G-H. I am the project planner.
Okay, Mr. Patacana?
And is the board accepting you? Would you like me to go through as well?
Why don't we do it very briefly with Mr. McDonough, because he tends to wax poetic.
Sure. My license as a professional planner here in the state of Jersey is current, in good standing, likewise for the national certification under AICP.
Does the board have any objections?
We've seen him before.
Yeah, once or twice.
Probably see him again.
We won't hold it against him.
Thank you. And Mr. McDonough, were you engaged by the applicant, the project planner, through this?
Yes, I was.
And were you able to do a site visit of the property as well?
Very familiar with the site. I've seen it multiple times over multiple years, yes.
And you're familiar with the application and the variance relief that's required to make?
Yes, I am.
And can you please take the board through your findings?
Sure. I'm not going to give the board any exhibits. I think the exhibits that are before you tell the good story, in particular norms exhibit with the orange and the green and the color coding to show how this is going to, from a planning standpoint, strike that effective balance, which we always look at when we consider the C2 balancing test, whereby the benefits of the application as a whole would substantially outweigh the negatives. And so, again, the essence of this application on the positive side is sound attenuation, sound abatement. We know that a zone line is pencil thin. That's what the courts say. And we happen to have here a situation where one side of the line is zoned SED 5A, which is a specialized economic development district, high activity. On the other side, we have a residential neighborhood. It's a beautiful residential neighborhood, very nicely manicured properties. So from a planning standpoint, we try to strike that effective balance and effectuate a nice buffer in between. The solution whenever we're dealing with a sound issue is a wall, a solid mass, and I can't say it any better than our sound expert just did, but we all know sound is measured in waves, and when you put a thing in front of it, it blocks those waves, and that's exactly what the applicant is doing here. The next consideration becomes the height of that wall, and this is where we look at the negative criteria. And if this creates a situation where the functional aspects of the wall would outweigh the negative aspects or the visual impacts that would be associated with a wall that is taller than what your zone scheme contemplates. We know a wall of six feet is what's allowed adjacent to a residential district or fence. Currently, it's at 13.5, and the applicant is now proposing 32 feet. What's nice from a planning standpoint is that that 32-foot height is below the height of the canopy that's out there now. I went back and looked at the aerial photographs. If you look at this particular site and the neighborhood, 1970, it's open field. It's not a woodland. It's, I don't know if it was agriculture or what it was, but it was open land. There were not trees out there. Late 1970s is when both of these facilities start to pop up. Residential neighborhood's still not there, and no trees in between. I'm not sure if it was the residential neighborhood or if it was UPS that came in and actually planted trees along the common property, but the point is, they're out there now and they're doing their job. They're actually providing a nice visual screen between the two properties, nice solid mass that has grown up. Composition of that buffer is primarily conifer evergreens that provide a year-round screen. So the fact that we have a natural buffer there and a 32-foot-wide band to attenuate a 32-foot-high wall, I think you've got the natural system already in place to mitigate any impact that would be associated with that particular wall. You also have testimony on the record that the applicant is looking to supplement or mitigate the landscaping that's already there. So to the extent that there may be gaps in that landscape system, we've got an applicant here that is ready, willing, and able to be a good neighbor, to be sensitive to the neighbors, and to work in terms of mitigating that impact as well. So whenever we look at the balancing test, we always look at the application as a whole. And importantly here, we're dealing with a land use that has always been important, distribution and delivery. This is a regional hub. This is not a local hub here. This is a facility that employs 1,500 people, so it is a very important job generator. Locally, it is also important as a community anchor, I'll say, from a business standpoint, and that reverberates outside of Parisepity as well. But the point is, this land use in particular over the last 18 months has elevated. We've now got the Center for Disease Control calling this quote-unquote "critical infrastructure" in terms of delivery systems and distribution facilities. Essential services is what the CDC calls this. So it is very important that this facility be able to operate, not only from a public health standpoint, but also, again, from an economic standpoint as well in terms of job generation and the like. If we can integrate by a substantial investment here with the wall that the applicant is proposing and mitigate the impact on the neighborhood, I think this is spot-on with what the flexible C balancing test would be, whereby, again, the benefits of the application as a whole substantially outweigh the negatives. And in terms of the purposes of zoning, that would be advanced here. We always look at a nexus with the purposes under the land use law. We look at Purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare. Purpose G, the provision for a variety of uses in appropriate locations. Again, this is not a particular suitability argument, but this is a site that was put here because it has excellent connectivity to the regional highway network. One doesn't have to go through residential neighborhoods to get access to those major transportation routes. Also, Purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment. And then finally, Purpose M, the efficient use of land. Basically, taking what's there. It's a replacement in kind, certainly taller, and I think that it is a planning benefit to move that wall closer to the neighbors where it's further away from the activity center, mitigating that noise or that damage to the wall. And again, just falling back on the testimony of Mr. Dottie, our acoustical expert here, that this is going to result in site betterment from a sound abatement and attenuation standpoint. There's technical relief, as you heard, for the fact that that wall is going to extend over two property, one property line, which is the demising line between two buildings that you see. It is not a setback from the residential, but a setback that is internal to the property itself. So it's really an unperceivable variance and something that presently exists in its current condition. All said, all relief here can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of your zone plan. And with that, I would offer that based on all of the testimony on the record, approval is warranted here.
Again, I have no further questions. I'd like to open up for questioning to the board and board professionals.
Ms. Fobatte, do you have any?
I have nothing.
I don't have nothing. All right, any members of the board?
No.
I have a question that may actually be for the attorney, but I just want to make, get it out there. Does approval and building of this wall in any way, in any way at all, reduce the need for the applicant to not obey the sound laws in New Jersey?
So. From a planning standpoint, no. Now, those laws are there.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Right. So if we, if this is allowed, it's a wonderful way to attenuate the sound coming from the facility, but they're still required to meet all of the laws with regard to what might be called a nuisance or, what do you call the laws? The performance standards?
That's correct. It does not alleviate their need to comply with the state noise standards.
So for the purposes of the entire, for the objectors and for everyone here, is that this is, what you're saying as a planner is that here is a way of attenuating the problem, but that does not stop the need for them to meet the requirements of the law?
That's correct. It's a solution, but it does not preempt a neighbor from waging a complaint if they're not happy with the solution.
Okay. It's just, I just wanted to get that out there. That's all. Any questions from members of the board? You have Mr. One, Mr. Teach?
Yep, one question, not sure for the planner, but let me ask that. For whatever reason, if this wall falls, are there any measures making sure it is, I don't know, whether it's going to fall inside or outside the UPS property, or if it falls outside? What kind of damage, I don't know, neighbors would have or anything of that kind?
What I like about this from the planning standpoint is it's a 32-foot-high wall with a 32-foot setback, and I say that somewhat tongue-in-cheek from a pure geometric standpoint. Nobody wants the wall to fall down. It certainly has to meet acceptable structural standards, which I'm sure we'll go through your building department, construction department, just like any other tall structure.
Okay.
Okay. We're done here on the board for now? Okay. Questions from the public for this witness on the planning testimony at this time?
John Tykowski, 4 Vale Road. You've stated the, that it was the best possible use by constructing this wall. Have you sought any advice in terms of the potential property damage to our properties by having a 32-foot monstrosity staring us in the face in the backyard?
I'm not a property, I'm not a real estate person, so I don't.
Have you sought out advice from any real estate people or anything else before drawing your conclusions?
No, because from a planning standpoint, I think the applicant has put in the acceptable measures to mitigate any impact on the properties behind it visually and functionally.
I never heard anything presented to that effect, so I held off on acquiring input from real estate people, but I think I'm going to have to go back and do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? This planning testimony, please come on up.
My name is David Nguyen, 8 Vale Road. Last name is spelled H-U-Y-N-H. Does this look like you spent a lot of effort addressing our concerns of what the wall is going to look like?
Yes. That doesn't show a single tree, as far as I can see. It does not show a single tree in that photo. There are many, many trees between that wall or that visual and the properties that are adjacent.
Have you been to our block and checked out the site?
Yes.
Is there a reason why you didn't take a picture of or include a picture of the areas where there are no trees, where there's, you could clearly see through and?
Again, the testimony on the record is that the applicant will fill the void. That's part of the condition of approval.
And this witness did not prepare the exhibits that the questions are being asked.
Gentlemen, you can ask the next question.
I feel as a planner, he looks at things very holistically, so you would probably understand the concerns here. Another question is, as a planner, do you ever put yourself in the shoes of the neighbors that would be adversely affected? And would you want a 32-foot wall in the back of your home being built encroaching your property?
The second part of that question is outside his expertise, because he's.
My apologies for the technicality.
From a, just so you understand.
Sure, appreciate it.
When experts testify, experts testify based upon their degrees and their background and their experience in the field, not upon their personal feelings. So Mr. McDonough and any of the experts are testifying along those lines. So certainly, Mr. McDonough can answer the question to the degree that he can, but questions about whether or not he would want it are not appropriate to an expert.
Unless the expert does use that as far as their analysis, being an expert, right, in this field.
The applicant has provided, from a planning standpoint, appropriate mechanisms to mitigate and attenuate the sound, and it's a encouragement, it's a recommendation of the master plan, the municipal master plan, to provide appropriate buffering between incompatible uses. The applicant is moving forward in that regard.
Thank you. Last question. We've addressed the vibration and seismic noise issues multiple times, and there hasn't been a response. Are you aware of that?
I just heard Mr. Dottie's testimony. You asked it of the acoustic expert?
I did. He mentioned he did not measure the vibrations with special tools. He is assuming that the noise is based on what we're perceiving as a noise issue, but we're explaining that it's, from all the times I've woken up and looked and surveilled, it's not from the trailers hitting the wall. I mean, the wall is made out of plywood. If the trailers were hitting the wall, it'd be gone by now. But, and the last piece is, yeah.
You need a question?
Okay. I guess the question is, are you aware that there are other noises that aren't being addressed in this, during this hearing, that the neighbors have been asking UPS to address?
My testimony is based on the foundation of an expert witness who has put on uncontroverted expert opinion that the sound situation will be better as a result of this proposal than what currently exists.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any more questions of this witness at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
No further questions. Here, excuse me, Mr. McDonough. Okay. The applicant has no further witnesses. Mr. Vice Chair.
All right. Would you like to save some for after the objectors put on their discussion?
Yes, please. I would like to reserve some time afterwards.
All right. At this time, we are asking if there are any members of the public that wish to come up, be sworn in and testify as to the conditions or things that they believe that they need to discuss at this meeting, that needs to be presented at this meeting. to discuss at this meeting, that needs to be presented at this meeting.
His degree was testifying, he's deciding whether...
That's fine. All right, um, if you want to explain...
So, just so, just so we're clear, uh, this is now the time you are going to provide your sworn testimony, your commentary with regard to the project. You're not asking questions. It's not time to engage with the experts or counsel. Uh, it's your time to, just as the other witnesses testified, it's your time to testify relative to the project, uh, at hand.
Okay. Will do. Thank you.
You would.
Um...
You have to...
Okay, sorry.
Everybody else got sworn in.
Okay.
It's going to be...
Okay.
Do you swear in front of the planning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, can you please, although you did it already...
Okay.
Could you please once again state and spell your name for the record, as well as your address?
Anna Gripp, G-R-I-P-S-N-Peter, another P, 12 Vale Road, B-A-L-E, in Yerby, New Jersey.
I'm sorry, Ms. Gripp, I just add this one other piece. You have to realize that as you are providing testimony, you will be, as the other witnesses were, perhaps subject to questioning, should be, if it, you may be, you may not be, but you are, uh, subject to questioning not only by the board, by the professionals, but even by Mr. Pontiere, uh, on this, on this matter.
That's fine.
Just so you understand.
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gripp.
Thank you, okay. So, ladies and gentlemen, board members, honored participants and neighbors, I am, I already stated my name and where I live, and my property borders that have UPS facility in question, I'm here to ask UPS to comply with all established standards. Over the past 30 years, the repeated failures to do, to do so have caused significant undue hardships for myself and my family, and the, the noise situation has increased dramatically over the years since I first moved in. When I first moved in, there were, there was really no, no, no serious issues with noise, but now there, now there are many of them. Uh, I have lived on Vale Road since 1991, was the first to purchase a home in, in the development, and first to reside on the street. We are very major supporters of our community, um, both within the county and local, um, and our family has been hurt by UPS, and as time went on, the issues intensified as UPS's business grew. We were impacted by increased light and noise pollution, excuse me, noise pollution, despite the fact that a fence was constructed along my property line. We repeatedly heard loud sounds coming from UPS facility. These included bangle, banging, vehicle noises, horns and honking, and that's worse than these backup alarms. I mean, we appreciate the fact that, you know, something's been done to mitigate the backup, but it's the honking of the horns that's really, um, a, a major issue for us. Um, and workers yelling. Um, in years past, there has been, uh, foul language that my children have heard, uh, not so much anymore, but still there is yelling sometimes that we hear. During the evenings, the volume and clarity of these noises increased. Moreover, light pollution from UPS's facilities bled over the top of the fence each night. It impeded our ability to enjoy the night sky. It was so bad that the light filled the windows on the back of my house, um, so much so that sometimes we didn't need to turn lights on in the back of the house. And yes, the lights have, uh, have increased, and on the Safflo Building, new lights were put on, or turned on. Either they were put on, turned on, they weren't here before. Both the noise and light inhibited sleep for our family. The lights made it difficult for us to fall asleep. Uh, with two grown children and two working adults, this imposed substantial hardships. At the time, my husband had a one-and-a-half-hour daily commute, and I had a four-hour daily commute. It was difficult to manage with lack of sleep due to the noise. As such, UPS created substantial health and safety issues for my family. In recent years, UPS increased its operations, they increased the amount of trucks on their property, they expanded their footprint into the former Safflo Lot, moving their sources of noise, vehicles, equipment, workers, closer to my property. Moreover, they also installed bikes, as, as mentioned earlier, severely worsening the light pollution. The increased proximity and intensity of the disruptions had become almost unbearable. For example, when UPS first moved into the Safflo Lot, they did not know how to properly operate their building alarms. As a result, I was disturbed by these alarms, and it took months, literally months, for UPS to finally resolve to turn them off. Um, they, they denied to the police that the, the honking of horns was, was happening as the police officer was standing there, and he told himself that as he was talking to whoever it was at UPS at the time, that he heard the honking of horns, and it was rather loud. UPS also fails to properly upkeep its properties, so all this discussion around trees and all this sort of thing is, is worrisome. This results in ongoing overgrowth of vegetation trees and poison ivy from their property onto mine. I constantly have to mitigate poison ivy and clean up branches which fall from UPS trees. I was lucky when a large tree cracked and fell on UPS's side, not on my side. I was lucky, um, because I was walking nearby the boundary. UPS never responded with what their plans were to check out the other trees. I've tried to contact UPS to correct these problems, they have not responded with how they would resolve the issue. When considering my request, please understand that my situation is somewhat different from that of most of my neighbors. As previously sta- stated, I've lived on the community the longest, I've suffered the longest. Moreover, the existing fence does not completely cover the border of my property with that of UPS, as a result. Since moving into Safflo Lot, UPS landscapers have continued to dump, blow and climb big tree branches and other refuse on my property, despite clear delineation of my property line, and I have had to clean it up. Um, I spoke with UPS about this issue the last time, uh, October, November. I, I have the text on my phone if anybody's interested. However, the landscaper showed me his work order that had no request to clean up the rest they left. The guy initially refused to pick up the stuff because it was not on the work order, and I continue to be responsible for picking up the refuse. This only demonstrates UPS's intent is not to help. At the time, um, I spoke with, the last time I spoke with the landscaper, it was flags that showed pesticide, pesticides used. I don't know if you're familiar with those flags that you put along the lawn that shows, you know, pesticides, or if there's some kind of lawn treatment? Those were dumped on my property. I was not comfortable handling possible dangerous materials I was not familiar with and proper ways to handle it, and to think this was dumped on my property. Also, because the fence has not completely covered my property line, treads, trespassers have cut across my property in transit, uh, to UPS and back. UPS offered the neighbors monetary compensation to mitigate UPS's violations. However, a cash settlement cannot compensate for the reduced quality of life created by the company. UPS's violations for the past 30 years are unacceptable. Now that UPS's operations have increased, I have greater difficulty sleeping because of the worsening noise and light issues. Moreover, I am less physically able to handle the garbage, the poison ivy, um, and the fallen tree branches. I feel, I fear I will continue to deal with these issues moving forward. And the other thing is, is that with these trees that UPS is, is planning to, uh, plant, I'm wondering if it covers in the winter? So, if the tree loses its leaves, what does the wall look like in the winter as well? Over the years, there were a few times I called for help, including UPS, UPS's landscapers, the Whitney Police, the Pacific Police, and the county for a noise, noise complaint. As a result, the county conducted noise testing on my property. As luck would have it, UPS was uncharacteristically quiet that evening. One evening of UPS quiet does not lessen UPS, does not lessen UPS's impact on our community's quality of life. Virtually nothing has been done to correct the issues. I implore you to use this opportunity to right the wrongs of the past 30 years. UPS is asking for a waiver to build a wall that will allow them to violate current standards. This sounds appealing when considering the jobs and tax, tax revenue that is generated by their business, however, I ask you to consider the very real impact this will have on my community. UPS's operations will only continue to expand in the future, and UPS represented, representatives have said during testimony and prior, that the wall will not comply with existing regulations. With the ongoing rise in online purchasing, this will result in increased noise issues as they continue to expand. As such, I ask to hold UPS accountable to the current standards. Furthermore, UPS is proposing to use lights on top of the wall. We've talked about that, I realize, but it would be great if we could get some kind of a guarantee that these lights would not have any further light impact on, on our properties and homes. If UPS has granted a waiver to the noise requirements, this has not fully addressed the impact for sleep and therefore safety. Furthermore, um, if there were, uh, you know, yep, so, I, I ask UPS to find ways to comply with the laws, wouldn't... For example, UPS has another facility in Pacific very close by to their current facility. Perhaps they could consider diverting some of the business there and equipment to this facility to help with the noise mitigation. As for noise standards during the day, I am enjoying my property through outdoor activities such as gargling, listening to constant honking of horns, constant, during the day and night, nearly, certainly impacts that enjoyment. As proposed, the wall will not bring UPS into compliance. It will result in further light pollution or noise pollution and/or noise pollution, and/or noise pollution. I ask UPS to either modify, modify operations and/or build a wall well onto their property that does not reduce the value of my property, yet complies with current noise regulations. I will not sign off on my rights to complain given UPS's history on how to respond to issues that create for the community. Thank you very much.
If I, if I can for a second, just so we're, we're clear with the planning board's jurisdiction on this matter, and I know that, uh, many of the residents, I've heard it tonight from even the, uh, UPS witnesses, Mr. Vice Chair, if I may?
Um...
If, as it's a jurisdictional...
Go for it.
Issue. Just so that, um, the neighbors, uh, understand, the jurisdiction of this board is simply as to the wall and whether or not the, it's appropriate to grant them a variance on two pieces. Number one is that lot line we discussed before, uh, and number two is on the height, uh, which exceeds the six-foot standard in the district. The board does not have any jurisdiction with regard to noise issues. It does not have any, um, uh, jurisdiction with regard to, uh, maintenance issues. Uh, it does not have any jurisdiction with regard to anything in terms of trespass issues. Uh, not saying those issues that you presented aren't valid, I'm just saying that that's not within the jurisdiction of this board. So, and, as I think you, uh, Vice Chair, Dinsmore had brought this up, regardless if the wall is or is not approved, nothing the board would do tonight would remove any obligation that UPS, or any, uh, operation within the town of Parsippany has to adhere to the rules and regulations of the state in New Jersey with regard to, uh, noise or light pollution as you, as you, as you brought up. So, the, this board does not sit, I just want to be clear, uh, this board does not sit in judgment of UPS, uh, in terms of its noise issues. It does not sit in judgment of UPS with regard to its historical light issues. The only question to the board at, at this point is whether or not those two, the site plan itself and the wall height, the lot line, being a technical issue, but that the wall height is a variance that could be granted by the board or not.
Okay.
Uh, I understand its connection to the noise. I understand that.
You're right.
I just want to be clear that anything that, with regard to noise complaints, nothing here stops any noise complaint that could be filed, that is filed, that is pending, that isn't pending, none of that affects anything that's done tonight.
So, understood, and, and thank you for that explanation. Um, what I'm asking the board then, uh, in light of, of what was just been shared, that the board understand that if, if this wall is granted, okay, we, we had a sound witness that said, "Well, you know, I have counseled," he, he said that he has counseled UPS on trying to mitigate the noise, and so if that, uh, that would help with this wall, so in other words, the wall then would be in compliance along with his counseling. With the history that I have just shared, I am, I do not believe that UPS will be in compliance with that counsel that they receive, all because of the history that I just shared with the board. So, maybe it may not have direct impact, but I do ask the board to consider the history of what we have experienced as neighbors, what I have personally experienced and shared, that I, I, I cannot say that I would, that I would trust UPS to stand within the counsel that they have received from, from the noise expert. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I know where I'm going, but I just figured out, you're very...
Courtesy break. Courtesy break, all right?
I'll call my department.
Uh, sorry, if we take a five-minute break?
Sure.
Okay, it's, we're running late, but take your...
I'm sorry.
Yep.
I know where I'm going.
Yep, five minutes, we'll reconvene, so...
I'm gonna get my phone, I guess.
On record.
Okay. We're calling the board to order again to reconvene. Nora, would you call the, the role, please?
Didich?
Yep.
Di Piero?
Here.
Bruggeri?
Here.
Mandell?
Here.
Mealy?
Here.
Napolitano?
Here.
Dinsmore?
Here. All right, um, do you have a continuation of your testimony?
I'm, I'm done.
I didn't know, I didn't know there were any questions to the board, like, as we're discussing.
No. Do we have, any, board members have the, uh, any questions for this witness on this testimony at this time?
Yeah, I have just one. I, I've heard all of your concerns, but since, in this application, either we grant the variance, allow the wall, the new wall to be built with the sheltered lights, or we deny the variance and, and don't allow the wall to be built, which one helps you more?
Well, the way to answer that question, sir, is to say that UPS, if they can modify their operations to comply within the law as, as things stand right now, I, I think they can do it. The honking of the horns, um, there may be, I, I'm not, I can't give them a technology or I can't say...
You didn't answer my question, though.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Either we allow them to build the 30-foot wall, or we don't. What do you prefer?
I say the wall will not help, so I say no, because I don't...
Don't build the wall.
Don't build the wall because I don't believe it will help, because it's still not addressing the law as it stands, and as, as I mentioned before, um, given the testimony that I gave and the examples that I have gave, I have given, UPS will not, uh, do anything to help mitigate the noise with or without the wall. So, to me, the wall is not really going to help. It's only going to...
If we deny the application, we save UPS a lot of money, and you still have your problems.
Well, then, we still have the opportunity to complain, but maybe UPS can find another way. I, I can't tell them how to do it. I can just say that the wall will impede us and our value of our properties for sure, and that's the only thing that it will do, because it's not going to comply with existing laws the way they stand now. If, if, if it was said that the, the wall will definitely, 100% meet the regulation, that might be a different consideration for us as neighbors.
I have a quick question for the witness. I think you said you're at number 12?
Yes.
Is that the end of the cul-de-sac?
Or, or the... Next to the end of the cul-de-sac.
Okay. I'm just looking at the exhibit that they provided, where, where the existing wall is, and it looks like it's not behind your house, so that there's currently no wall back there. Is that correct?
That is correct. I have a fence.
Right, you have like, a fence, but not, but not the 13 and a half-foot wall.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to understand where your property was. Thank you.
Any other questions of this witness at this time?
I just wanted to ask, do you think the wall will help reduce the noise and the landscaping issues you have? I think you said they were throwing stuff over the fence. Do you think this wall will help that?
Well, um, not, probably not the poison ivy.
Mr. Chairman, as, as far as poison ivy, all it takes is one bird to decide to empty its bowels, and you now have poison ivy again. I have this on my coffee, I have somebody back in residential Miami, and we killed a poison ivy, and a year or two later, it's back. So that, that's not an issue of UPS, you know, I'll stand up to UPS, I'll complain to them that they're blowing the horns in the middle of the night, and I understand that, but the poison ivy is not their issue per se. Yeah, they can clear it out, and two years later, it's going to be back, guaranteed.
Right, it does require maintenance, but that, we all maintain our property, sir, and I, I just feel that UPS could do better with their maintenance of their, of their property, because it's continuously growing through the fence onto my side, and I keep spraying, I can't go onto their property, sir. So I keep spraying on my side.
Well, this 30-foot fence will eliminate it coming under the fence.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it's still, it, but, but the point here is, is if they're saying they're going to put, plant trees and all these, if they're not maintaining now, where's the guarantee they will maintain in the future once they get the wall approved? There is, there is no evidence that they will maintain that property. They're not maintaining it now.
Counselor, you're hearing the discussion here, is your, is your client inclined to try to remediate some of the issues that might be remediatable?
As a condition of approval?
I mean, as a condition of approval, yes. I think she testified that she's on the end of the cul-de-sac.
Close to the end.
In the areas where the, the wall is being installed.
Yes, yes, I mean, it's...
Yeah, it would agree as a condition of approval to, to clearly invasive species and plant and landscaping if requested by the...
And to maintain it appropriately, so that, you know, so the trees that are past their prime are properly culled and things like that, it's...
There's various township ordinances...
Right.
...that require that, and, and it would be clear in a resolution that that area would have to be properly planted and maintained in accordance with the forester, county forester, and the maintenance of the area would have to be handled appropriately, even though it's probably technically the border of Parcippany and Hanover. I'm sure, Mr. Pontier, your, your client is not going to be overly concerned about that in terms of listening to the forester, in terms of maintaining that area, that is UPS.
Correct.
I know I can't ask questions, but there is a little bit of a concern on one of the plans, and maybe I just, I'm, I'm not an architect, but on one of the plans, there is a building that is shown on the corner property, Lot 1, minus 15, on Lot 1, on, on the Whippenny side of the border. I do not know what that building is, and I'm, I was curious whether there was plans to put a building there, because there is no building there currently, it's just...
Oh, that's just probably taken from the tax map, I assume.
Yeah, I, I, so it's not a plan to build something there?
Lot 1 appears not to be owned by the UPS.
Yeah, that's not their property.
It's a Hanover property? Okay.
Oh, no, it's got the same, no, it is owned by UPS, Lot 1 in Hanover, not the Lot 1.
So if there's a building there, is that wall going to, you know, I, I know I can't ask questions, but I'll ask it if you can't answer it, don't answer it, but, so if there is a building there, or plans to be a building there, how is that, how is the wall going to help with the noise mitigation in the future?
Well, there's no plans in this application for sure of anything going there. It shows in a, a, some kind of structure there that exists.
If, if they were to do anything on that lot, it would not be, this board doesn't have jurisdiction over that lot.
Okay.
That lot is subject to the jurisdiction of Hanover's planning board.
Okay. But that does belong to UPS, correct?
Where is it at now? It's a shed, doesn't it?
We can't have, we can't have cross-talk, but I think we're trying to accomplish the same goal. It's in, it's in Hanover.
In Hanover, okay.
And anything that would happen there would be subject to Hanover Planning Board or zoning board, whatever case may be.
Oh, it does, okay. I just, I saw a building there, I wasn't sure what it was, so thank you for that.
Okay, any other questions for this witness on this? Counselor, do you have any questions?
I do not right now for this one. That's, that's...
Okay, there were...
Somebody else?
No.
Okay, you had, you had other witnesses that wish to come forward?
Sir, could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear in front and tell truth for this planning board tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, even though you did it already, let's state it, spell your name for the record with your address. Thank you.
David Huynh, last name is spelled H-U-Y-N-H, 8 Vale Road.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thanks. So I, I moved into the area May of 2016, and, you know, I've been dealing with the noise issue for some time. I questioned myself if I was dumb and I shouldn't have moved there, but, you know, I've been living there, I like, I like the area, become friends with my neighbors, and it has not been an easy process dealing with the UPS. Being new to this neighbor concept in a, in a suburban area, you know, I tried to be as amicable as possible and, and, and address things nicely, but I've also learned that it was kind of broken promises, to say the least. You know, UPS had problems to plant some trees, and they're like, hey, they'll address the noise issues, and then somebody said, hey, I'm not planning anything, you shouldn't have moved here. And I said, okay, maybe you're right. But, you know, it's, it's been a difficult process. I'm not sure if you guys understand how much noise nuisance issues, you know, affect the quality of light, especially when you're trying to raise a family, and also, you know, the experience has just been so stressful mentally, physically, and psychologically speaking. And, yeah, I, I heard what the board attorney mentioned, that the board is here to approve the two different variances that UPS is seeking. I don't really care about number one, because that doesn't affect me, I don't think, but the second one does. And I just don't think, after I've been through all this, that the fact is they've addressed all the, the concerns around the noise, vibration, seismic, I don't know if the right terminology is, property. I do appreciate the efforts, but I know it's a challenging issue, and I just don't know what the solution is, but the fact is, they, they are putting together hypothetical analysis based on measurements that Norm has taken, and I appreciate them doing this, but I agree that, you know, it's hard. It's like, how do you take all these measurements just by kind of looking through the site and spending a couple, few hours at, on the, on my property, or, or our properties? Unless you're living there day in and day out, there's no way for, for anyone here on UPS's side to clearly explain how frustrating the noise issues have been and the dealings with them. A 32-foot wall is monstrous, and I don't think these images are doing justice to what they would actually look like. I wish I could, you know, rent a, a bus and bring you all to, to our property lines and see what that looks like. I am also a little concerned that this is Parcippany Troy Hills Planning Board and not Hanover Townships. So, you know, I, I just don't think our interests are fully aligned in that sense, in, in even just making a, a good call on whether or not this should be approved, the variances should be approved. You know, I could go on and on about all the concerns, but, you know, I, I would imagine each one of you have more or less been in a, a home where it's your primary home and you want to enjoy it, and, and to deal with something like this, I can imagine you guys would be able to sympathize on how, how much of this is, is a difficult process for us to go through. And the only thing I would ask is just to maybe table this and not make a decision right now, because, you know, going back to, to the question that this gentleman asked, Mr. Pira, yeah, what's better, to, to grant the variance or not? I don't know. You know, I, I don't, I don't trust this because, because of my dealings and my issues of waking up to the, the seismic vibration noises, you know, I think one of the things that Norm mentioned is, he's, he's done some analysis, but I don't, I don't think possibly, you know, he, he was able to capture when the trailers drop at night, and, you know, I suspect based on working from home now, I actually had to move my office because of, my office was facing the back, I actually moved to my bedroom, which is facing the front now, that, you know, there's noises during the day, but it kind of ramps up at night too. And, you know, when I looked at the home, I went there like on a Sunday, early on in the day, I didn't hear any noises, but it's, it's pretty bad at night. But anyway, that's, that's kind of what I just wanted to say is, you know, I would ask the board to, to consider the things that I've mentioned and, and think through it clearly, or, you know, ask UPS to address the, the vibration issues and the aesthetics aspect. Yeah, it's important, right? You know, you don't, I didn't buy a home to have a 32-foot wall behind me, it's, it's, it's not something I, I really want, and I agree, it'll probably decrease my home value, which, you know, spent a lot of money saving up for this one, so, anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
Any members of the board have questions of this witness? This time, counselor, do you have any questions of this witness? Thank you.
Would you be okay if I sat at the table?
Enjoy.
Do you swear in front and tell truth for this planning board tonight, sir?
I do.
Okay, and same thing, even though you did it before, name and address for the record.
John Tykowsky. Is this on?
Yes.
T-Y-K-O-W-S-K-I, address Fourville Road in Whippenny. I'll be brief. On October 25th, 2019, all residents in Vale Road, the five of us met with UPS to offer to date Pitney, the UPS wall proposal was unanimously rejected by all of us. There are no ifs, ands, or buts. The proposal lacked information, and it was otherwise flawed as detailed to less. By UPS's own admission, the 32-foot wall will not resolve a noise issue. In fact, moving the wall six feet closer to a residential home will only worsen the condition and lessen the effectiveness of anything constructed. If the goal was noise reduction, replacing the existing wall, which has to be torn down, in the same, and replacing it in the same spot would be more effective. In fact, moving it six feet also drops it vertically about five feet on my property, so it's reducing the height of the wall. In actuality, UPS's concern is not really the wall. They want a bigger parking lot. The whole purpose of moving the wall five feet closer is to extend the size of their parking lot. This is also mentioned at the meeting, but obviously is not part of the application they've given to you. As soon as you grant the variance to move the wall, they will then immediately backfill that area up to the wall, pave it over, and increase the size of the parking lot. Now, the sad part about it is that if they park their trailers instead of parking them perpendicular to the wall, offset them by 30 degrees, they would effectively reduce the length of their trailer from 53 feet to 48 feet. It's a simple calculation. I drew a rough draft. The young lady next to me has a copy of this for your approval, if you'd like to review it.
You want to make, you have, I have this computer?
The board can have it, I have copies on my computer, or I can make them available.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we mark it?
I'll do.
Wait, wait. Why don't we, look, can you help me get that up here? All right, we're gonna, we're gonna mark that as P1, public one.
P1.
Yeah. I can, I can mark this, sir?
Oh, absolutely. It's yours to keep.
Okay, well, it'll be Nora's to keep.
Now, all of you are sure of parking a car in a parking lot before, and there's two types of parks. One is where you go head in, you're perpendicular to this curve to the parking space, and other parking lots have it parked at an angle. Well, it's the same thing here. If you need more space to operate, by sacrificing a couple parking spots for a couple of trailers, you've accomplished the same thing. You've created the room you need at literally no cost. I'm concerned that UPS is also encroaching on the existing wetlands on my property, home all the way down at the eastern end, 8203. The last time I had to get permission from the town to do something, they said there was a 75-foot setback from the wetlands. I believe UPS will be encroaching on that when they move that wall. They probably already are, but the wall is already in place. By the way, the property in question was a pig farm at one time, okay? But the pigs are gone, and it's, it's turned residential. The noise study was interesting, I appreciate the fact that it was taken at the second-story level and the numbers generated there. I did have the opportunity to study noise measurements in college as well, something familiar with the instruments used, and also the decibel scale and the A-weighting of the decibel scale. I don't have a problem with it, except for the fact that the initial findings showed that the 32-foot wall was not going to bring it into compliance.
I don't think they ever said that.
They never said it would.
That's true.
But the numbers, the numbers on the print that we were provided at date Pitney on day one did not show it being in compliance.
Okay.
UPS will be removing mature trees, which act as a natural sound barrier. In terms of the end of comments as well, they've done absolutely nothing to maintain the property on the other side of the wall. It's littered with debris, dead trees, fallen trees, and even within their, their proposed plan, I don't see any way to them to gain access to the back part of the property for the purpose of maintaining it. No, I know it's not your, your job, but I'm just bringing it up again. They also have made no attempt to negotiate a settlement with the Vale Road residents to compensate us for damage from past noise issues or damage to property values if the new wall will break. The plans they provided to us seem to be lacking in detail, although there's more information that was made available tonight at the time I wrote this, all as I had with the initiatives. We've requested information on the cost differential between a 32-foot wall and a 16-foot wall. I received no information. We're asking this because possibly we can work with UPS, maybe 32 feet is not the best cost-effective versus noise cancellation solution to it. Obviously, the higher the wall is, the more damage it's going to do to my property. The elevation prints provided to us only show the Vale Road side of the elevation, all right? They did not show us the elevation of the UPS side relative to the existing wall or the proposed wall. So we're unable to determine on the wall structure what, what the actual rise is, the absolute rise is from the parking lot itself. There are numerous impact noises, percussion-type noises that occur over there. One of them I can only equate to a quizzle, dropping about a 10-pound dumpster from about 10 or 15 VPA, probably. It jolts you out of bed. There's other times where there are other impact noises where the house does shake. As far as I know, I'm entitled to a good night's sleep as well. I'm also considered a critical employee or a critical... to compensate us for damage from past noise issues or damage to property values if the new wall will break. The plans they provided to us seem to be lacking in detail, although there's more information that was made available tonight at the time I wrote this, all as I had to look at initiatives. We've requested information on the cost differential between a 32-foot wall and a 16-foot wall. I received no information. We're asking this because possibly we can work with UPS, maybe 32 feet is not the best cost-effective versus noise cancellation solution to it. Obviously, the higher the wall is, the more damage it's going to do to my property. The elevation prints provided to us only show the Vale Road side of the elevation. All right? They did not show us the elevation of the UPS side relative to the existing wall or the proposed wall. So we're unable to determine on the wall structure what the actual rise is, the absolute rise is from the parking lot itself. There are numerous impact noises, percussion-type noises that occur over a wall. One of them might be only equated to a quizzle dropping about a 10-pound dumpster from about 10 or 15 feet of air. It jolts you out of bed. There's other times where there are other impact noises where the house does shake. As far as I know, I'm entitled to a good night's sleep as well. I'm also considered a critical employee or a critical worker in the COVID economy. So, these sounds, by the way, will not be mitigated by a wall of any height. It's not the nature of all, it's not this type of impact like noise. UPS basically has been so successful, they doubt they own their facility. At some point in time, if I'm going to say it's enough, between the Eastman Road annex, buying of the Safflow Building, and the existing property, they are maxed out and obviously still trouble. My question to the board is, if UPS someday decides to move, will they take the wall with them? Or will it still be sitting there, standing there as an eyesore to me and my neighbors? Our first move in in 93, there was little to no weekend activity. In fact, it was shut down about 7:00 Friday night. We had a lot of peace and quiet over the weekend, and we felt that was a reasonable compromise. The 24/7 operation literally makes my property worthless. It's unusable. So my question to everybody here is, how many nights a week should I be jolted out of bed and woken up by the noise generated, of which there's no answer? I don't know that. I do know in the past year, I had that for arx stents, and loss of sleep or interruptible sleep is certainly a contributing factor. I'm not blaming UPS on it or anything else, I'm just happy to state the medical fact. With that, I appreciate your time, your attention. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Have any questions from members of the board?
Just a question, just one. Oh, never mind. Sorry. It's sort of, first of all, thank all of everyone for coming, but we've heard on several points radically conflicting testimony. And I'm just curious how you reconcile the UPS person's testimony, the first gentleman to testify, that this operation has basically remained the same with, and he said that under oath, and how, and he had numbers, it said that things moved around, but basically within a certain amount of time, this is what they were doing. How do you reconcile that sworn testimony with what yourself and the lady said that this has progressively gotten worse? Somebody's not accurate here.
Look, remember, we all moved in there in the 90s. Okay? You're getting data and information that cover less than a week's worth of time. All right? We have 84 years of data collectively from living next door to UPS. So the information you're getting versus what we're living through over this period of time is going to be different. I can't expect four hours of noise collection between 11:00 and 1:00 to compensate me at 2:00 in the morning when a dumpster drops on the ground. At least from 2:00 to 2:30, they apparently take their lunch break because that's when things quiet down. But it's nothing to get these impacts again, 4:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning. I took a couple of weeks where I actually made notes in a notebook as how many times I had what I considered to be a sleep interruptible noise. All right? And it was, it was more than one a night. So this is, this is ongoing, and like I said, the wall doesn't fix it.
It seems to reduce it by eight decibels.
Eight decibels is not a significant number. All right? Eight decibels still does not bring it into compliance according to state requires.
But then I'll just go back to what Councilman D. Piero asked. Would you like a partial resolution to this with the potential to work something out for the remaining decibels and impacts? Or would you like us to save UPS a bunch of money? Vote this down, and then you will continue to have eight, six, 10 decibels over what, you know, it might be otherwise.
It's a great question. My question in return is, if they put the wall up and we're still making noise complaints because they're not within the limits of the law, then they've also spent a lot of money, and the fines are going to continue, all right? And there's not an unlimited amount of time or times when you can actually file the same complaint with the county or the state, fine UPS, and say, okay, behave yourself, and go on to the next day and the next fine and the next fine. So the only real solution, if you really come right down to it, is to limit the hours of operation, quite frankly. If they didn't operate between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, we wouldn't be dealing with noise issues. If they didn't operate on the weekends, or part of the weekend at least, we could enjoy our properties a little bit more.
I understand that. However, we're here, we're hearing this, these well-felt arguments, and our, what we're trying to ascertain here is whether that wall is more in the public good than not. That's one of the two criteria, am I correct, Counselor?
That is correct.
And the other criteria, it filled me in because I know enough to get myself in trouble. The other, the other criteria, if you could restate it, I'd appreciate it, for C. Variance is?
Well, what you're considering is whether or not, let me put it this way, is whether or not the variance requested of the increase in the wall height is of a benefit over what we have in Tajapar, Parsippany, as a six-foot height standard. Now, there's obviously, there's an additional consideration, what is it having any additional benefit by going up that high? And the testimony provided from the applicant says that that does have some version of a relief to a condition that's being brought up. Because otherwise, why would they put up a 32-foot-high wall? I don't think this board would ever approve a 32-high-foot wall if they just said, we want to put up a 32-high-foot wall. But what you have to do is consider the positive and negative balance, and here you have the proposed positive, which is the reduction in noise, versus the proposed negatives that are being brought up by the neighbors, and also their indication that they do not feel, in their estimation, that it would resolve the issue in direct response to Councilman D. Piero's question.
Thank you. And that clarifies it. So that's, so once again, you heard what we're trying to discuss.
Oh, yes, yes, and I appreciate your time.
Sure. And, you know, so, again, sometimes, I think you've already made your position clear, but sometimes half a loaf seems better than nothing. And that's sort of, I'm throwing that out there, that's kind of like my advanced logic, you know? I'm saying half a loaf might be better than nothing.
I understand. And I have a happy question to go with that.
Okay.
All right? What if they came here and the sole purpose of their application was to expand the parking lot by five feet?
Okay. So, wait, wait, this is testimony time, it is not question time, and really, we should not be getting into a, I appreciate, it's not your fault at all, sir.
I don't know.
You're doing fine. I'm instructing, I'm fastigating, sir Jerry, to stay in line. But let's stick to any further questions from the board.
Any further questions from the board?
I have a question relating to someone other than this gentleman.
Who would you like to ask the question of?
If I will get your permission, and Mr. Wenzel, could we ask the gentleman that said he represents Hanover Township to clarify, what is it that Hanover Township thinks about this application? Could you come up?
All right. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
All right. I'm not going to swear in the gentleman because he's an attorney at law, he's a member of a law firm which represents the township of Hanover, so all he could do is state his client's position. He's not providing his own testimony. In fact, he gave his home address, which you didn't need to do. He could have gave him the office address. But counsel, you heard, Mr. Meeley, why don't you restate your question because attorney said this time of night?
Could you clarify, I'm sorry, Mr. Wenzel, could you clarify Hanover Township's stance since they represent the people that have come here this evening?
Yep. The township, it feels like kind of a helpless position here because we're before Parsippany's planning board. We've kind of just, we've been witness to this whole process, just trying to help the residents. And in talking with the residents, really, our position is just, we watched the back-and-forth between UPS and the residents, we watched the discussions kind of mature to the point where they were getting, it seemed like kind of moving in the right direction. And the township's position is just that it would like to see the residents satisfied with the outcome of some kind of noise mitigation situation with the UPS facility. And what I would say is, with regard to this hearing, it's UPS that's seeking the variance. It's, is the board well knows, Section 22550 of the Township Code says that planning board approval of the site plan shall be granted in the event that the site plan complies with the following standards and regulations. And what was just mentioned before, Part G says that the details of the site plan for the authorized use will be such that the operation will not be detrimental to the public interest. And it was stated by the council for UPS, or actually by the planner for UPS, that UPS is providing a big public good. It employs 1,500 people, it's a big facility. It's already operating, though, in the township. It's not going to stop operating. And the residents of Hanover, they might not be the most sympathetic in this hearing, but they are, that's also the public good. It is, as Dave said, a monstrous wall that will block light, will affect property values. It's not that the township thinks that the wall can't be a part of the solution, but it seemed like the two parties were kind of moving in the right direction, and the hearing just had to happen because the time for the application was running out. And I think what would really be beneficial is, as Dave said, if the planning board could perhaps table the application and the sides could maybe discuss a bit further. I think the last back-and-forth between the parties was from the residents to UPS. UPS has made good outreach, good faith outreach to the residents previously. That's kind of, the ball is kind of in the court of UPS at the moment. But I think everybody would benefit if there could just be a little bit of extra time, if this could be tabled, if there could be an attempted solution, and then maybe a revisiting of this at the planning board later on. I think the wall maybe will be a part of a solution, but I just think that the board's deciding definitively tonight that the wall is going to be what's done when the noise mitigation issue isn't necessarily concluded. There's so many other issues. I think that a tabling of it and a buying of, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm speaking as planning board member here, and my counsel may just rope me down and throw me back and say no.
That way.
But I don't see that this in any way impedes your township's or their residents' ability to complain about a valid question. I think this isn't the answer. I think this is an attenuation of the problem. So I just am sensing a little bit of hyperbole here, that if we allow this, it stops all progress elsewhere. And I reject that out of hand, as, you know, the board may decide to table it tonight. We're going to have that discussed. We're running very late, poor Nora is probably sitting there saying, I deserve to be in bed right now. But, you know, so that may be a factor, but I'm just, I feel very badly for the residents. And I'm very concerned if their testimony is correct, that UPS has not been the good neighbor we all want them to be. And I have always believed them to be, myself. And I'm just concerned that our tabling, this isn't going to change anything. If we go ahead and we allow the wall, that they will have an attenuation of a problem. It won't be an elimination of a problem, it won't be a solution to the problem, but it will be a reduction of the problem. And I recognize with government, quite often, reducing the problem ends up being the only action taken. And then it gets worse later for other reasons. But I'm just trying to see you understand fully what the planning board's role is in this.
Mr. Dinsmore, very, very respectfully, if I may respond, the one thing I would say is just, the board has been, by the way, so accommodating tonight. I can't believe we're still here at this hour, and you guys have given it this much time, and everybody's gotten to be heard. I can't tell you how appreciated that is by the neighbors, I'll just say that. But I'll just say, very respectfully, I think the issue is that if the board makes its definitive decision granting the variance tonight, then the discussions with UPS can continue to go forward, but it's a big setback for the residents and they're kind of handcuffed because then at any point, UPS can just say, well, we're just going to go ahead and build the wall, and that's that. And I know the residents can still complain about the noise, but I think that's the concern here. Whereas if we tabled it and revisited it, I think that we could make a very good faith effort, try to take a step forward, and then maybe the next time around, it would just be, that's that, they made an effort, the board sees fit for the variance to be granted. But I think that a good faith negotiation could really lead to something if the board were to grant some additional time here, just a bit of additional time.
May I provide some input?
I would love your insight into this.
Mr. Pontier, would your client be amenable to having this matter adjourned to our next meeting?
While Nora's looking that up, I'd like to ask a question of the attorney. When did Hanover rezone their property residential?
I couldn't answer that question, I'm sorry.
It was probably just 1975. It was after our prop, the Parsippany property was zoned.
Correct.
As it is.
I assume.
And so Hanover made the mistake at that point in putting a residential right on top of.
I think, Mr. Mandel, I think you probably heard one of the experts' testimony that this was.
The pig farm.
Well, we had the pig farm testimony, but then, I think, just to clarify, there was some testimony that the UPS and the residents were about the late 70s, well before my time, but certainly not before Mr. McDonald's time, who's getting up out of his seat.
UPS was in the 70s, but the residential areas came about the 90s, so it's 40 years later.
You had some testimony from people moving in in the 90s.
My next opening is August 23rd.
So, Mr. Pontier, I'm asking you, creating a hot seat, whether or not your client would be amenable to having this matter held over for final decision until that August date, with the understanding that perhaps, based upon the interchange that has occurred tonight, perhaps further discussion could be had amongst UPS and the neighbors. It does not, just to be clear, it doesn't change the board's jurisdiction, as we've talked about extensively before, because the board really does not have any role to play in this issue.
Maybe you should find out first if what the board members want. I'm inclined to go along with the expert testimony that we have received instead of the intuitive feelings of non-professionals. I've heard many experts testify in the past, and we've tended to rely on their expert testimony as opposed to someone's personal feelings. So I'm prepared to vote tonight, I don't need to have it postponed, but that's my own opinion.
Well, the, and Councilman, you're absolutely correct, that the ultimate question about whether or not a matter should or shouldn't be postponed is up to the board. You're absolutely 100% correct. I was just trying to ascertain what Mr. Pontier
I was just trying to ascertain what Mr. Pontier's point of view, if any, was.
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor. And respectfully, the applicant would prefer to push forward tonight with all of the testimony that's been given. The applicant's very appreciative of all the board members and board professionals' time tonight. And then we would like to wrap up and have a vote tonight if the board is so amenable.
All right.
You already came up with one, sir. Well, that's... But we can't have interchange. We can't have interchange. Councilman DePiero's a... Well, Councilman DePiero's a board member and has absolutely right to express his opinion at any point, as other board members have. All right, so we've had... Counsel, I appreciate it, thank you very much. Now, is there any... I'm sorry. Anybody else?
That's fun.
Trying to be like United Airlines pilot.
Is there any other individual from public who has not yet spoken who wishes to give testimony at this time? No? All right, Counsel, that closes the public portion. You have your chance to sum here.
Sure. Thank you. So as the board has heard tonight, the applicant is seeking preliminary and final site plan along with variance relief to demolish the existing 13-and-a-half-foot wall that is currently existing only on Lot 1.2 and to construct a new 32-foot-high wall that will encompass all of Lot 1.2 and into Lot 1.1 as well to provide additional sound attenuation to the neighboring properties. You did hear testimony from a civil engineer regarding the wall that's proposed, that it will be structurally sound and built following submission to the Building and Construction Department and their sign-off. And you did hear important testimony from an acoustical engineer who did give expert testimony that the increased height of the wall, specifically of the 32-foot-high wall, would provide the best ability for the applicant to comply with the noise regulations of the state and that there is, in fact, an increased benefit to having that heightened sound wall. While you did hear testimony from citizens that they are dissatisfied with the current noise and light coming from the property, I do believe that what's before you tonight could alleviate many of their concerns. You did hear that the light on the proposed wall will be shielded downwards using only LED lighting to avoid any light spillage outside of the UPS property, and that the sound wall at an increased height will significantly reduce the sound coming from that property as well. You also heard from the applicant that they're willing to work with the township's forester to remove invasive species and add additional landscaping along where the wall will be constructed. And as you heard from the applicant's expert professional planner, that the benefits of this application do outweigh any detriment that would be caused. And with that, I do submit to the board and request that the board approve this application tonight.
Right, that closes the applicant's and the public portion of tonight's testimony. Do any members of the board wish to comment on this case at this time? Any further? All right. Does anybody wish to make a motion at this time? And in that motion would be an allowance for people to make comments if they wish to do so. Mr. Mandel?
I move that we accept the application 19:513 UPS 501, 801 and 799 Jefferson Road, Block 741, Lots 1-1 and 1-2, preliminary and final major site plan with a C variance plus all the stipulations that...
The conditions that the applicant identified.
Identifying to agree to.
So they'll be working with the township forester and all of the other...
All the other stuff.
The other stuff. And of course, this does not in any way reduce their obligation to meet the noise standards and other standards of the state.
I would expect the residents to call the county and the state immediately if the noise has exceeded the levels allowed.
Do I hear a second?
Second for Jerry.
All right, Nora, would you call the... Give the roll call.
Did each?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
For Jerry?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mealy?
A brief comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I understand that UPS is a multinational corporation, and they are of a great benefit to this township. But I wonder whether there are other alternatives, such as other property within the township, possibly adjoining them, which could be used to elaborate their purpose for being here.
I understand, but that's not what we're here for tonight.
Yes, I understand that, but that being said, I will vote no.
DiPolitano?
No.
Dinsmore?
Yes. Okay.
Thanks very much, board, we appreciate all of your time tonight.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Well, that was intriguing. You get it very exciting.
I'm ready. So is Nora.
Huh?
I said, "You're ready to go home, too".
Yeah, right, and right clean up, just like being at home.
Before everybody goes, we have to make a motion to adjourn at this point. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Can you take them off?
All in favor.
Pull those things off?
There we go.
You know what, I mean, if you have something... Oh, if you have something that wasn't handed out this part... All right, then I've already marked that, so take them, I don't want them.